Okay. Councilmember Ebert's on line, and you have a quorum.
Great, thanks so much, Madam Manager. Madam Clerk, we'll go ahead and get this meeting started if we can. I'd like to call to order the Reno City Council meeting for December 3rd. If we could take roll, or do we do the pledge? We'll do the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Reese, Mr. Santa Claus, if you could lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Reese. Madam Clerk, if we could take roll, please.
Calling roll for Wednesday, December 3rd, 2025 Reno City Council meeting. Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Dour.
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez. Councilmember Ebert.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Shivi, absent at this time. Vice Mayor Martinez, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Thanks so much, Madam Clerk. Can we please open public comment?
Our first item today is public comment. It should be noted for those in attendance that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you're called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you state your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. For those participating in chambers, in accordance with council rules 6.3.11, while in this room, please be respectful. Disrupted behavior from audience members like clapping, yelling, whistling, et cetera, which impede the meeting, may result in a warning issued by the presiding officer. If this behavior continues, you may be removed from chambers. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Vice Mayor Martinez, our first public commenter today is Terry Brooks.
And today I'd like to share with you my thoughts on medications and what seniors go through. Because seniors are more affected by diseases and more easily affected by their conditions, seniors are more often prescribed various kinds of medications. But sometimes seniors have certain limitations that prevent them from getting prescriptions, which can lead to more frustrations. Sometimes they're not able to pick up their prescribed medications because they may not have access to transportations. Or they may not be able to afford to buy their medications because they are financially limited because of recent inflations. And there are times when seniors have their medications, but because of lack of memory, they forget to take their medications. And if they forget that day and didn't take what they should, then they may convince themselves that those pills didn't do any good. There are some things that seniors like me often forget to do. So we need a system that will remind us of what to do. But if we take certain medications that can lead to addiction, once we take them for a long time, they might lead to a bad reaction. And if you take different medications for the same conditions, they could have a dangerous effect, leading to dangerous reactions. If we quit taking medications because we have suspicion of their effects that they have on us, then that could lead to depression. Once again, we might take some advice from friends that we know. And if we listen, then they might help us to show us where to go. I personally have a negative response to any medications, so I try to avoid taking any medications. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to coming back if I don't take any pills that day. Thank you.
Art Rangel via Zoom.
Is Art there, Madam Clerk? Can you hear us, Art?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can, thank you.
Okay, sorry, I don't know what that was. Well, welcome, councilmembers and city staff. For the record, Art Rangel. I've been pretty critical of city policies and procedures over the years, but I want to give credit where credit is due. I want to give Chief Nance credit for the great job she's doing, given the department she inherited, and working with limited resources. She's been able to introduce Reno PD to best practices and has the ability to execute. I was impressed by comments Chief Nance made in elaborating on why she cannot provide more officers when asked to provide more police downtown. These are just a few examples of her excellent work. I also want to commend Vicki Van Buren and her finance staff for doing a great job of keeping the council well-informed with the city's financial challenges and preparing you for what is likely to come. Ms. Van Buren has stated that while revenues are growing, they are not growing enough to keep up with expenses. Now I want to make other comments and ask a question. The city of Reno, city of Sparks, and Wasco County all suffer from serious budget deficits. What we are not hearing is what you, the city council, are doing to work with other local jurisdictions to increase revenues. No longer can we rely on bricks and mortar casinos to pay us, but there is hope. When Jeremy Agrolo was here in late October, Councilmember Anderson asked him a very important question. Her question was, which industry sectors we should try to attract to help our economy? He answered healthcare and the trades. And by the way, both of those industries pay more than gaming and hospitality industries, which the city has relied on for decades. So my question is, what is the council doing to attract new high-paying industry sectors to fill the current and future revenue gaps? Transforming Reno's economy by attracting new high-paying industry sectors so that the city can provide the services the public expects and deserves would be a great legacy for you to leave behind. Thank you for your time.
Calvin Via Ipando.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Calvin Via Alpando, and I'm here to speak on the challenge on affordability in Reno. So, I'm sorry. As much as I love Reno, it does have its downsides. An example, the cost of groceries and gas rising, but minimum wages. The cost of living went up nearly 100% in the market. Just 25 years ago, trying to purchase a home would cost you approximately $160,000. But to purchase a home now, it's almost $600,000 to $700,000, making it almost impossible to be able to purchase a home. And better yet, instead of lowering the cost or paying more, the city of Reno just gives us apartment complexes that cost the same to purchase a home. The difference between the wage growth and the spiraling costs of housing and daily necessities is making it almost impossible for the middle and working classes in Reno. The current minimum wage offers only $12 an hour. Yes, $12 an hour kind of makes you feel inhuman. Even those earning above minimum wage are experiencing a struggle to be able to help feed their families. This is not merely economic trend. It is a threat to our community's stability and the ability of residents to build equity and the long-term pursuit of financial well-being. Reno's recent rapid development and growth field a housing crisis almost equal to living in California. Stores are being built, construction all over the cities are being funded for, and yet it is becoming a struggle for children over the cities to be like, I'm sorry. All I see in my city is becoming a trade market for this, to keep the rich richer and keep the working class working. An example would be rented real estate. They take up to 40% to 50% of homes, so almost half of the people are renting, not owning. So that means they are not building equity and not developing wealth. We, the people, need your help on the path to homeownership and financial freedom. Thank you for your time.
Very, very nice job. Explain what school you're with? Oh, you guys are with HUG?
Yeah.
Well, it's so nice to have you.
I'm sorry about that.
No, you did a great job.
Yeah.
Excellent. Sometimes, I mean, you just get up there and get paralyzed.
Yeah.
You know, public speaking is probably one of the biggest fears that people have. I thought you did an amazing job.
Thank you so much.
And very, very good point. Good job.
Thank you so much.
Who's your teacher?
I forgot his name. His nickname, like, we call him Dinosaur.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Great job. Impressive.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the record, Madam Mayor arrived at 10:06. Aiden Gerato.
Hi, Aiden. Are you guys all together?
Uh, yeah, we're all from AACT.
You are?
Yeah.
Great school.
Yes.
Been there. Love it. Okay, go ahead. Just take your time.
Yes. Hi, nice to see you all. Ladies and gentlemen of the Reno City Council, like I said, my name is Aiden Gerato, and I thank you for the time given to me today. In the month of October, a concerning number of dead pigeon bodies were found within the downtown Reno area. To hear this is devastating to both me and others because pigeons are innocent creatures trying to live an abnormal urban life. And although it is true that the situation has already received attention from local news outlets, I believe there's more to this situation than meets the eye. On October 30th, the Plaza Resort Club Hotel on 121 West Street publicly announced that they were hiring a pest control company to deal with the pigeon problem on their roof. The tactic that is likely being used by this company is avian pesticides, a poison to kill the birds that are simply seeking shelter because they are unable to build an effective nest naturally. The most commonly used pesticide by these companies is called Avitrol. Avitrol is promoted to be a harmless neurotoxin that temporarily changes the nervous system behavior of the bird that consumes this. This is done in order to encourage the pigeon population to stay away from the area due to the abnormal behavior of the bird that consumed the pesticide. The realities of this, though, is that it causes intense convulsions, sporadic flying, severe pain, and eventually, death. A slow, chaotic, and painful death, all because the pigeons were trying to find a home. And yes, I can't deny the fact that they are within legal limits to be used, but they are severely inhumane. There is a very high concern about the other local animal deaths because of pigeon bodies. When another animal consumes a bird who was killed by Avitrol, that animal will experience the same painful effects that the bird went through before it died. Most of the time, these cases of secondary poisoning are from pets such as dogs or cats. It is specifically stated within the official instructions of Avitrol that all bird bodies must be disposed of by either burial or incineration, yet locals are finding bodies everywhere. Now, all because a hotel wanted to use the quick method of getting rid of birds, our pets, and other local animals are at risk of paying the price that the pigeons have already paid. Instead of allowing our hotels to hire pest companies to use pesticides, we should stick to the more humane ways and keep placing spikes or bird nets instead of using pesticides that are banned in many cities and states across our country. If it proves to be a challenge, our city should at least implement a mandatory permit in order to hire pest companies for the private businesses so we can regulate their actions and not end up with bodies everywhere. Yes, they may be filthy creatures who only chase after food from people at the bus stop, but that's the life they were forced into whenever we found no use in them anymore. We, as humans, need to realize that the impact on our world that we have isn't just limited to plants and ourselves. We can shrug it off and blame it on the past and say that it isn't our fault, but when are we going to try to make an impact on the animals that have been shunned away? Because when the city streets are empty, filled with only the sounds of running engines, we will miss the gentle coo of the pigeons. Thank you for your time.
Excellent job. Were you nervous?
A little bit.
You didn't seem like it at all. You did an excellent job.
And that was riveting and concerning.
You know, that's information that we have not heard before. So, I was just telling this one, he is the Chair of the District Board of Health, and so we're gonna, we're gonna contact them. Good job.
Juan Benitez Amado.
All right. Good morning, Serrano City Council. My name is Juan Benitez Amado. Today, I'm here to talk about the 395 construction and the issues that have been coming from this project. To begin, everybody who lives in the North Valleys have to wake up earlier than usual in order to get to destinations on time. Recently, I've seen people have to leave one whole hour before in order to make a 20-minute drive that would have been before. Why, has this been attributed to? The reason is, many of us have seen that the project has been delayed multiple times. Originally, the project was slated to be completed by fall 2025. However, as we have seen currently, the project has not been completed. Even though I do understand that there are multiple issues that can affect the expected time of a project to be completed, such as the weather or lack of funding in some cases, it has been seen that we haven't been completed with this project. Now, I did see that on city of Reno, the, one of these strategic, excuse me, one of the strategic priorities that we have is infrastructure. However, one may have to ask themselves, is it or is it not really due to the time that has been allotted on this project? One solution, though, that I have seen, that we could use next time, is properly allocating funds or allocating more resources to projects so that projects could be completed faster. In addition, timelines could be set way more in advance so people have a better understanding of when projects will be completed, so that people won't be angry when we say, oh, the project will be completed fall 2025, but we have to wait until fall or summer 2026. Moving on, one thing that I have seen coming out of the 395 project, which has impacted highway drivers, is road rage and impatience. A lot of people have become impatient on the 395 area, especially during rush hour, people emerge, and it creates a way more dangerous driving situation than should be. In addition, due to all the people having to wake up earlier, their response time might be slightly less or might even be impaired due to either the lack of sleep or the fact that they are irritated by the traffic, which in turn leads to accidents, which, when there is an accident on 395, the traffic time goes up from 40 minutes all the way up to, say, an hour or even an hour twenty in some instances. However, I would like to see construction being done more efficiently in the future. However, I do understand if there are issues such as weather implementations. Thank you, city of Reno, for hearing my public comment. Have a good day.
You did a great job. You look like a future senator.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Ava Cecilia Rosema.
Madam Mayor, can I just?
Sure.
Give some information real quick? That public comment was wonderful, and it really just kind of reflects a voice to so many people, including myself, that live in the North Valleys. But I wanted to share that that project is an Endot project, so it's run by the state. So unfortunately, city of Reno has to just be a good partner with Endot. But also, I wanted to share that Endot will be coming to Neighborhood Advisory Board meeting in December. It's going to be December 18th at 6:00 PM at the Stead Airport. So it's, you know, a public meeting. I encourage you to come, or anyone else that has questions about the work on the 395 or any Endot projects, to come. You'll have an opportunity to see what's going on with the projects and ask questions of, you know, Endot specifically. So I just wanted to share that information just because it was so relevant to that comment.
Thank you so much. She is our ward representative. That's Councilwoman Ebert. And if you want more information, we'll get it to you. Good job. Okay. You ready?
Yep.
Okay, you're gonna be great.
Okay. Hello, my name is Ava Rosima, and I am a student at Academy of Arts, Careers, and Technology. In present times, housing has been significantly unaffordable for many residents and is continuing to increase as time goes on. Consequently, homelessness is becoming even more prominent within the Reno and Sparks area. High median home prices are well above the national average, and the median listing price of a home is $335,000 as of August 2025. A large contributor to the inflation of home prices is the lack of diligently addressing the significant housing supply shortage that has failed to keep up pace with the rapid population and job growth. Additionally, the inflation of home prices can be traced back to private equity firms buying single-family homes en masse. These private equity firms then rent out these houses at an average annual increase of 8% compared to the national 5.4%. These privately owned companies also introduce new fees for things such as digital payment and maintenance, adding to the monthly cost of rent. Reno has also been ranked 76 out of 150 cities for expensive housing and relatively higher cost of living. Approximately 12.5% of Reno, Nevada's population is considered low-income, and approximately 32,000 out of 263,000 people are living below the poverty line. Many of the individuals living within the Reno area cannot afford the markup of rent. A solution is to raise a percentage of housing units designated as affordable housing for low-income earners to reflect the population of impoverished individuals. A distribution of low-income housing to reflect the amount of impoverished individuals can greatly benefit the city of Reno. Currently, only 6.2% of Reno's housing is labeled as affordable housing for the impoverished. Ensuring that access to public affordable housing for low-income families matches the population of said families in Reno can impact the greater Nevada community to allow for assistance in being able to buy and look for housing. Additionally, this solution would fall under the pre-established Reno City Council goal of economic opportunity, homelessness, and affordable housing. Thank you for your time.
Fantastic job. Fantastic. I'm so impressed with all you guys.
Naomi Board.
Hi, Naomi.
Hi.
We've got a Naomi over here. Maybe we could trade you guys out. Going back to high school any day. Great. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Naomi Board, a student at the Academy of Arts, Careers, and Technology, and a resident of North Valleys. Reno is a beautiful city, a city to be proud of, but I can't quite extend the same pride to where I live, North Valleys. North Valley Valleys, according to the Census County Division, is home to 6,900, 63,996 people and is one of the largest high schools in Reno. Despite all of this, North Valley's community areas are severely lacking. We have a few parks in our area, but many of them, such as Rayleigh Heights, whose bathroom has been out of commission as long as I can remember, are a little rundown and need of an update. And there's almost nowhere to go with our communities during the winter times, when it's too cold to be outside. While we do have a community center, it is only available for reservation, and its amenities are this exactly: 20 folding tables, 100 folding chairs, a fridge, microwave, sink, and small counter space with no Wi-Fi and bathrooms. Well, it has bathrooms. So, I recommend building a new community center in the North Valleys, similar to the Evelyn Mount Northeast Community Center, with an indoor gym and pool and a seating area to truly make North Valleys a great place to live. This would help North Valley's community to become just that, a community. I've noticed I feel disconnected to the North Valleys, and I have few friends there. Because I go to a different school, it's hard to connect with my peers. So, a community center would allow room for that. Of course, creating a community center would be very expensive, so to help stipend the cost of creating such a facility, a membership day use.
How about have a sip of water? That's what I do. It's right there. It should be right there on your desk. Oh, here it comes. We're a little behind the eight ball net. You're doing great. Take your time.
Would be to create a membership slash day use fee that could be charged to the locals with a discount. This is an essential addition to our community. Helping improve our overall wellness and making the North Valleys a real place to live, raise a family in a place to be proud.
You did. You did a great job. Fantastic. Did you guys all come up with different topics and issues? It's impressive. Very impressive. And Councilwoman Ebert, she's on the phone. You heard her. She represents your ward. She feels exactly the same way you do. She's working on lots of initiatives. I'm gonna make sure you guys are connected with her. She can give you a lot of the meeting times, and so your voice can be heard, but you guys have done a phenomenal job. That was great. And your passion, I know it was difficult, but your passion came through, and that's the most important, to be compelling. We felt that with your comments, so thank you so much.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that. You did a fantastic job, and just wanted to let you know, I'm working as hard as I can to get us a community center. There's, Stead Elementary School is being decommissioned. They're building a new campus, so I'm trying to work with the Wasco County School District to hopefully get part of that campus to use as a community center. So I want you to know that I hear that, and I'm working on getting us a community center out there. So thank you so much for showing up and saying these things. It's great to hear you, and just know I'm working on it for us.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Kaylee Renfro.
All right, Kaylee. You got this.
My name is Kaylee Renfro, and I am a student of the Academy of Arts, Careers, and Technology. And over the last couple of years, I have loved to see the wild horses on my commute to school. I've watched them graze and play and see the foals grow up from a distance. With the rise in urban development and the fence to keep them safe, the sight of these wild horses has become much rarer, to the disappointment of many. Sorry.
No, you're doing great. Just take your time. You don't need to rush. Just take your time.
To satisfy this desire and increase interest in our wildlife, creating a trail or such would provide a way of allowing the public to view these iconic creatures with the right safety precautions. Having a specific designated area for them would also be much more marketable and could increase tourism, especially because Nevada is the state with the most wild horses in the West. I would also like to see an increase in education about the horses and our other local wildlife and how we can care for them and the different ways we do that. This could, sorry.
You're doing fantastic.
This could also ensure that volunteer work that the AWHC needs to vaccinate the horses to control the population, and that could continue. Ideas like these are something I would like to see in the next strategic plan regarding public attractions and preserving our historic wildlife and the joy that brings to the community. Thank you for your time.
You did a great job, and I'm actually gonna send it over to Councilwoman Dour. This is a topic that she knows incredibly well inside and out. You wanna weigh in?
Well, first of all, I wanna say I didn't plant her.
Yeah, now we think you're working for her.
Yeah. First of all, I just wanna thank you for identifying this issue. Just, you know, I'm so pleased to know that you're passionate about the wild horses and that maybe you're willing to be one of those volunteers to help. You mentioned the American Wild Horse. It's called now the, not the Coalition, but the, not the Connection Campaign, called the American Wild Horse Campaign. They have been working with us on that wild horse fence, and you will be pleased to know that we have actually identified a new wildlife preserve. It's for all animals as well as horses. It's along Veterans Parkway, so just north of Rattlesnake Mountain. As you're going north, if you look to your right, you will see horses. I was just there yesterday, and I saw some. But what I wanted to say is, your idea was not just about that, but you also suggested a trail. And so one of the things that I used my council money for when we had ARPA funds was to start working on a trail over there. And that project has been transferred over to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, and just recently, I helped them get some money. I think they're bringing that potential grant to their board. I think they're bringing that potential grant to their board in either their next meeting or the next meeting. So, they're planning to work on a trail system and they have identified this horse preserve or the animal preserve as one of the stops, potential stops on the trail. So, you're right on target and I'd love to connect you. It sounds like, do you already know people with the American Wild Horse?
I do not.
Okay.
But I've done research on it.
Well, I saw Jenica here. We can get you some contacts. They would love to have volunteers like you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. And yes, let's put it in the strategic plan. I love that.
All right, Madam Mayor, with that, we have no additional public comment. There were four comments which were generally nature and not directly associated with an agenda item received prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, Tuesday, December 2nd. These were written correspondence received via our Reno.gov online public comment form or by emails to our office. Copies of these have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are a part of the record. Four neutral or concerned comments have been distributed.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'm going to send it over to Councilman Reese and then actually to Councilman Martinez and I'm going to go hang out with you guys for a minute.
Well, Madam Mayor, I was going to say I'd love to have a picture with our students.
Oh, that's a great idea.
I think it's incredibly important that we welcome young voices into the room. We don't often have the opportunity to spend time with each of you and so it's a great opportunity for us to learn about what matters to you, but also for you to see the process of government. Government only works when the people are part of it. So, we're going to take a picture with everybody and I'd love for that to be something you can have happen.
Ready? One, two, three.
All right. If I see Jenica, but can you make sure the young lady with the wild horses gets my contact info? Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor, we're moving on to item A4, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right. I guess I'm going to send it over to, do you have any? I have no changes to the agenda. That was perfect. Okay, awesome. Okay, we're going to head to consent. May I get a motion or any items pulled off the consent agenda? I'm going to start with you, Councilwoman Anderson.
No? Nothing to the right of me.
Yes?
B9, B10, B11, and B12, please. And we can hear them all as one if you want.
Okay.
Sale properties.
Okay, sounds good. All right.
Same items.
Same items.
Just a comment, I don't want to pull it, but on item B5, the Riverside Drive burn restoration project, I just wanted to identify. I'm so excited we're moving forward. That's fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. Fantastic. Councilwoman Ebert.
B7, please.
Pardon?
B7.
B7, okay.
We'll approve all remaining items.
Second. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, heading over to my right, Councilwoman Taylor.
Is B, do you want to start with B7?
Go ahead. Councilwoman Ebert.
Yes, I just wanted to.
I had that last on my list, so, go ahead.
Which, oh, I didn't know she was talking. Hi, Elaine Wiseman, for the record. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I can give you a brief overview. This is a resolution in support of an affordable housing rehabilitation project, so this is to maintain an existing 216 units of affordable housing located in Ward 5 on McCarran and almost 7th Street up there in Northwest Reno. It will add an additional 30 years of affordability. It's simply a resolution, no money involved, just our support that we send to the state of Nevada and then they do the financing package for the developer.
Okay.
Good job, Elaine.
So, I just wanted to pull, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to pull this item because, you know, we had a public commenter talk about affordable housing within Reno and stated, I just wanted to get kind of an overview of this and just a little more information about Reno's, Reno's part in this. So, it sounds like it's just, just a resolution. We're not investing funds, we're just supporting this project.
That's correct. And our support allows them to get their financing package. So, without our support, the state would not be able to issue the bonds to support this rehabilitation.
Okay, so, it's just part of the process. They, they will require support from the city and then they can move forward with their processes.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, that was kind of it. Like you said, I just wanted to talk more about it because it's, it's a, you know, kind of a hot topic with affordability and housing in Reno, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I don't know if anybody else has questions?
No. Motion, please.
Okay. Motion to approve?
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
So, thank you. On item B9, I actually didn't have a question. I pulled it by accident. I don't know if my other council members have questions on B9, so I can make a motion to approve that and move into, okay?
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. On B10, 11, and 12, my question is, two of these properties are within the RDA boundaries and I want to make sure I understand how the city has protections with selling these properties for what we want to see developed within those RDAs and we're getting the best price and we have a little bit, we have some control over what we see being built there. So, I'm hoping for one of them on the West 4th Street, not so much because it's out of the RDA, but I thought that you could talk a little bit about that and maybe give us some other options if possible. Thank you.
Yes, Ashley, Attorney Assistant City Manager, for the record. To answer your question, Councilwoman, the decision in front of you today is to choose to either proceed with auction or not. If you proceed with auction of these properties, then you do not have control over the economic development purposes of what these properties can be used for later. If that's something that the body is interested in, your options with that would be to give staff direction to go out for RFP on these properties that were within the RDA to help align with what your vision is. Alternatively, we could also entertain unsolicited letters of interest that we would bring back before this body for you to weigh in on if you would like to entertain that idea for economic development purposes. So, you can have control or you can go to auction and get more money, but we can't do both.
I'm interested in hearing what my colleagues are, what their comments are, but I think I would prefer to go out to RFP or an LOI unsolicited proposal on the ones that are within the RDA.
And I believe, and maybe you can clarify, and I can't remember, in the RDA advisory meeting, you did bring it up, these properties. Am I right?
Correct. So, these properties went before the Redevelopment Advisory Board, before we brought them to this body, and then this body reviewed everything in February to give us direction to sell. So, this is kind of that decision point for you is how you would like us to sell them because up until this point, we've not received explicit direction. It was go forward with the process, let us know. And so, we're really at that decision point. So, if you would like us to proceed with auction, we can. If you would like us to proceed with an RFP, we're happy to package that up and bring it back to the body.
I just didn't, I couldn't remember what their comments were, but I know that they were generally supportive.
They were generally supportive, yes. That's why we brought it forward to you and at the time, the direction was trying to help with property sales, get these on the tax rolls. We originally had thought that these tenants that are currently on these properties were interested in purchasing them. As we've gone through the process, a few of them have decided that they're not interested, so that's what's in front of you today.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Reese.
Thank you so much, Ms. Turney. I suppose my question is, and it's in the staff report, so I think it's done a good job laying it out, but normally, our preference has always been to sell to current tenants.
Correct.
Right? That's been, since I've been on the council, that's always been the preference. So, our priority then has always been the long-term investments by tenants in their property that they were leasing from us. So, you're saying that with each of the properties identified here, we've gone to the tenants and the current tenants are like, no, we're not interested in that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, for B10 and B11 and B12, that is correct.
The other, B9, was one where the tenant was interested.
Tenant was interested and you just took direction to sell.
Yes, understand. So, I didn't then understand my good colleague from Ward 1's concern. You want to make sure that we get the highest best price and the way to do that is through the auction process?
No, I think, if you don't mind the dialogue.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
I want to make sure that the properties that are within the RDA for the plan that we have, we have some control over what gets developed there. And if we go to auction, it could be anybody that buys these properties and develops anything within the RDA and I would like to see a little bit, some more parameters, so.
So, what?
We don't see things that we don't want in this area.
Understand.
Or don't fit the plan, not that we don't want, that don't fit the characteristics of the neighborhood or the development we're trying to build.
For my, for my part, I'm not sure either of those are inconsistent, right? I make an assumption that if you go out to auction, the highest best use determines what the outcome is, right? So, if you spend a certain dollar amount on it and that's what it fetches at auction, then it, the highest best use may be what is intended for it. But your position in the redevelopment agency is that we want to have greater control over it, which may limit the types of buyers that we're interested in.
I would reframe it that if you go to auction, then your ability as a body to institute economic development agreement requirements, so for example, you want something built within five years. You lose that ability when you go to auction and so someone could come in at the auction, they could offer $1 more than the highest appraisal price, which is what your auction would require, and they could sit on that land for 20 years and not develop it and you have no recourse. If we go to RFP, you can set the parameters, give direction to staff where, for example, you would like economic development to happen within five years or we have a clawback. You don't have that option with auction.
And I suppose similarly, when we look at the RFP process, in the past, what we've done is we've set this parcel, parcel X, is available for RFP. We've had people come in and propose what their ideas for it.
Correct.
And then we've selected those and in that selection process, sometimes we've reduced the price to accomplish a goal.
Correct.
Is that what you're thinking is intended for these properties? Right? If we wanted, for example, affordable housing to be built there.
Right.
Right? A person could come in with their RFP, say, I get that the appraised price is 1.5 million, but I will only pay 1.2 million. The other three, you're going to have to get up in order to induce me to build affordable housing there.
If you go to RFP, yes, that's correct.
I think I, like Ms. Taylor, believe that the RFP process is the better process. Whichever process we use, I certainly believe that our goal is the same, right? We want the highest best price we can get for the property we own and we want to have control of it. So, I'm happy with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, Councilwoman.
Madam Mayor, and thank you. I have just a couple of questions and first a comment. Last meeting, I pulled the land acquisition or land sale off the consent agenda and the reason why is exactly this conversation. Since it's on the consent agenda, it presumes that the staff's recommendation is to auction it. That's how it's written, right? It's not written for discussion and debate. It's written, this is what staff's recommending is to auction it. But I believe that these land items should be on a separate section of the agenda where we are planning to discuss it. Number two, since they are in the RDA, I think that they should be co-agendized over to the RDA because the land is within the RDA and it is land we own and you brought it to the RDA board. So, do you see what I'm saying?
I, I do. If I could help add a little color, these properties are owned by the city of Reno. They're not owned by the RDA.
Okay.
The entire property plan went to the Redevelopment Advisory Board because there was suggestion of the RDA purchasing some of the land from the city of Reno.
Right.
But none of those are what are in front of you today, so I, I see your point, but just clarification, these properties are wholly owned by the city, so the RDA doesn't have authority over them.
But like we did the other properties, shouldn't we be considering having the RDA buy them so that they come off the city of Reno tax rolls and we can move forward with this proposal to both get a project that we would be interested in? Since you did the right thing, you offered it to the existing tenant, which we have set in our land policy. We already did that 10 years ago. So, we passed that threshold, but once that threshold's passed, it seems like the right move to me and to help our budget as well, is to have the RDA buy it, to have this kind of discussion, to set some parameters, and then we get the best bang for the buck. We get money to the city, we get the right kind of development that we'd like to see. And so, those are some of my thoughts and I think I had one more question. If we did do this, I just wanted to confirm that the minimum bid that you've listed is the minimum bid and that's the appraised price, right?
Yes. So, the first one, to go back to your previous point, is the city has the authority to do the thing that you are asking for, which is through the RFP process in order to identify what type of development you want there. U.S. city council members have that authority. You don't have to be sitting in your RDA capacity for that.
Yeah, so you're saying we don't have to go through a two-step.
Correct.
The only concern I have is that if we don't get an instant bid or somebody doesn't meet this minimum price, I mean, maybe that's the moment it gets potentially transferred to RDA.
Mm-hmm.
You know, just to speed up the process. And did have a last question.
I, oh, sorry.
One more thing. Just, we, we used to have a land acquisition and sale agent and we don't anymore. I think they got laid off. Who is handling land sales or has knowledge about that in our?
So, this has been handled by a handful of people. There are some folks in Public Works who have picked up a lot of this work. Has that person previously worked there? This is some of the work that revitalization manager's been working on and then I've been working on to fill the gaps as it is on the city side.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
And I also think, if I understand you correctly, that it would be good for the council, especially in RDA, that there would be some oversight, especially because in RDA is the most vulnerable to or most prominent revitalization, those types of things. The other thing is the, and we're getting off topic here, but I think we also have to come back with looking at the RDA. That was done in, what, 2005?
I mean, the plan.
Yeah, so, I think we have to really look at it comprehensively because now we're just piecemealing it together. We need a plan moving into '26 because 2005, population has changed, parameters have changed, might be something the council needs to look at, to look at parameters and mapping, things like that, that should be included. So, I just want to be really careful about taking other steps before we take steps of priorities and looking at the whole picture of the RDA. But I think it makes sense that taking those properties, putting them there, council has oversight to make sure, I think to Councilwoman Taylor's point, that revitalization is taking process and also that's going to be a priority. So, you want to make sure that it's a use or something that benefits what the council wants to accomplish.
On the few parcels that we own, I have control.
Because we have control over that, right? Most of those, we don't have control over because those are private, that's owned by private landholders, but the city does have some purview in the land that they hold, so we can make sure we're putting uses in there that are conducive to revitalization. So, go ahead, Councilwoman Taylor.
So, I just wanted, I wanted to make sure that I was understanding this correctly. There, we have, it sounds like everybody's saying the same thing and we have two choices, two paths, right? One is to change the, the motion today to make it not go to auction, but go out for RFP and one is to direct the RDA to do this two-step process. Is that what you're talking about? Why would, so I'm asking you to tell me what the benefit of that two-step process would be over just taking it to RFP and educate me on that.
Right. So, it was just a thought that it's located within the RDA, that RFP, my experience has been it takes a period of time and sometimes we don't get a bite the first time. We might hold on to it for another year, but I'm not opposed to giving it a shot first under the city and if it isn't a very quick turnaround, then to transfer it over to the RDA. I mean, I'm totally, I was just saying, taking the next step after what, you know, Councilmember Taylor was recommending, it sounded like, or considering that if it's not working quickly, which we've seen, literally, we have gone out to RFP sometimes two and three times on a piece of land and the right person is just not right there at the right time. on a piece of land, and the right person is just not right there at the right time, or the timing isn't right. So I guess what I'm suggesting is, if, instead of the auction, first of all, I'm suggesting that we agendize these differently, so we have a specific conversation about them, and we don't miss, just put them on consent and do whatever staff is recommending, that we at least make an intentional decision. So that was the first thing. Second thing is, if we want to go out for RFP, I actually support that. And third is, if it doesn't go quickly, I recommend that we quickly move to have them sold to RDA, take our money and have RDA continue work on it.
Well, I think.
I mean, once we have.
To streamline it, now, the best possible way to accomplish this is one step.
So, Madam Mayor, that would be my recommendation. I would look to the attorneys to tell me that I'm allowed to do what I would recommend, is to accept the fair market value today, and then not take action on the auction, and I have heard the words that they would like us to do RFP, and we'll return at a future date with that item.
So just to be clear, I mean, the action today is either adopt or not adopt the resolution. There's been a lot of discussion, and that can come back in whatever form you want, but I would be hesitant to do anything other than just not take action on these items.
But the resolution is auction, right? It's not to accept appraisal, or is it a two-step?
Can they accept the fair market?
I mean, might we not do it, do it, or go out to RFP? That's not something that we could do at this?
Yeah, today, you're just looking at these resolutions, or adopting and not adopting the resolutions, and just to keep it within that boundary.
Okay.
But there's been the discussion, so staff knows kind of what the next steps would be.
All right, thanks, Jonathan. I'm going to move to adopt. Is that what he wants to do?
I don't, I think that, my recommendation, Madam Mayor, is that you take no action today on these three items. Staff has heard the discussion, not the direction, and we will return with an RFP through the city's authority, single step, streamlined, and we'll come back to you. But you take no action today.
Got it.
Madam Mayor.
Madam.
I have a question, too.
Hold on one second, Councilwoman Ebert, go ahead.
Thanks so much, yeah, I just wanted to add some more context, maybe if I can, to this conversation. I understand that there's currently tenants in all of these properties.
That's correct.
Can you tell us how long they've been there, and if they have current leases there, and how long those are as well?
Yes, so each of these parcels that is in front of you, these are retract parcels, and so they had tenants on them through the retract process, and so they've been in place for decades, many of them. We've been renewing their leases as they've come up. We've got, all of them are in a current lease. If you would like specifics, I can go over each one of them, if that would be helpful, but each of them have an existing lease today.
Yeah, I think so. I think my point is just understanding that if we do want something different, we have to understand that there's a history here as well, with folks that have used these properties and want to continue using them, despite them not wanting to purchase them. They have historically been here, and I think if we would like to change that, I think that's the will of a body, but we also have to be understanding that there's somebody currently occupying that space.
Also, thank you, Councilman, I think that's an important thing to note, is that even if we go to RFP, the existing leases would need to be upheld by the new ownership. So that is one part that's important to note, so thank you for that. To go over, Madam Clerk, if I can have the overhead, thank you. The first parcels in front of you, item B-10, this is for Reno Salvage at 301 Montello. This, currently, their lease is in place until August 1st of next year. They do have a year-to-year lease, they've been there for multiple decades, to give you an idea of that one. The next one is at 2000 East Fourth Street, this is item B-11, it is currently leased by SRS Roofing. Their lease goes through October 31st of next year as well. The final parcel in front of you today is 1510 West Fourth. This one is not located in the RDA, this is currently leased by Truckee River LLC. Their lease is in place through May 31st of 2027.
And what do they do?
Thank you.
They do trailer repair work. It is the last remaining parcel that the city owns on the West Fourth Street corridor. You've sold all of the other retract parcels.
And also, it'd just be good to know what the rates are of size of the property, are they, tell me, are you undermarketed?
Every single one of these parcels are undermarket at the time, yes.
Uh-huh.
Well below, in many conditions.
And that's another issue, to be honest with you.
I think there's certainly an opportunity, as we've dug into these a bit more with some changes in staffing and opportunities, we would make the recommendation that if you don't sell them, or they don't go to RFP, there's not a bite, that we slowly start moving everyone to market rate on their rent, ensuring that they're paying their property taxes based off of the possessory interest. So there's certainly some work that staff would like to do in this space to help set the city up financially, that has just previously not really been managed as well as we'd like it to. So we would like to start through that process as well.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, well, then we're not going to take any action today, you're going to bring it back.
We are going to bring it back. So we are not taking action today, we will take these three properties and prepare them for an RFP, and once the RFP goes out, we'll notify council, probably via memo, so you're aware that they're out on the street, and we'll bring forward all of the responsive bids to this body for decision.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, sorry, I forgot about you.
Yeah, yeah.
Up there in the sky, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I understand, is selling the property to the RDA, does that put it on the tax roll?
Does not put it on the tax roll, Councilmember. The opportunity you would have would be a cash infusion, essentially of using RDA II capital funds to then fund the general fund by way of this property acquisition, but it would not change the tax roll.
Okay, so then essentially, the RDA would become their landlord until the lease ends?
Correct.
Okay. And then the RDA would be responsible for increasing their rent as well, correct?
Correct, as the landlord.
Okay.
But we're, correct, yes, if that happens through the lease process, if we're there, we'd redo the lease, and yes.
And do we have the authority to have the RDA buy this property, or what is that process to have the RDA purchase this?
Yes, you have the authority to do that. That is something that if council would like to direct staff to do that, we can bring back an item in the future. We will bring the annual property plan back to this body in late February, for you to evaluate all of the city-owned parcels. We'll give you updates on the parcels you have sold, where the RFPs are, and direction, if you would like to change, or amend, or stick with what we have, what you approved last year. So you'd have an opportunity to do that in February, if not sooner.
Okay, so would the sale of these properties to the RDA, would that go to their advisory board?
If directed by this body for that to be consideration, you could give us that direction to go to the advisory board, if you'd like them to weigh in? Yes.
Okay, yeah, I think I would. I don't know how the rest of council feels, but we, you know, made this board and made sure that we had, you know, experts in different fields to weigh in on different things, and I'd be curious to hear, you know, more from them on this specific route. So, yeah, I just wanted to talk more about selling that. I agree, we need the money for the general fund, but I would like to get this back on the tax roll, like, as soon as we can, and also increase the rent. Like, it's crazy to me that the rent has not kept up with the market rent. I don't know, like, who oversees what the rent is for these facilities, for these buildings?
That was previously managed by an employee who is no longer here, and so as we've redistributed that workload, that's allowed us to look at the opportunity to start moving everybody to market rent.
Are there other locations that are being reviewed to make sure they're at market rate?
Yes, yes, so that's part of the annual property plan that we bring forward to this body in February. Again, all of those properties are owned by the city, they're not currently owned by the RDA, and so as part of that process, we are evaluating all of the leases, all of the contracts, potential for sale, so that comes before this body every year for you to give us direction. This is the first year we've done it, so you will see that on the go-forward.
And I believe you will.
Okay.
I believe she will take it to the RDA advisory, I think you have time.
Yes, if, so again, if there's direction from this body that you want the RDA to consider buying them, then yes, we would take that to the RAB. If the RDA is not interested in purchasing, then having the RAB weigh in would just be a policy choice of yours, if you would like that, because it's an oversight component.
Okay, this is a little off-topic, but just kind of something that came up just
in this discussion, but is there other sources of revenue in the city that haven't been reviewed to make sure that they're keeping up with market rate? I just, I feel pretty shocked that we didn't realize this was happening, given the budget deficit that we're currently in, that this only was discovered due to, you know, this process that we're going through now.
So, if I may, Madam Mayor, I can.
I'm kind of like, so Councilwoman Ebert, I just, I want to put it on your radar, as we get into budget, this would be a great time to address things like fees that have not been right-sided for years, and other areas of the city where you are seeing sort of a consistent theme here with undervalued, and also, I think, keeping up with current economic conditions. I mean, as a city, we will never make it if we continue and listen. It's a tough balance, it's a very tough balance, because we're all sensitive to what our community can afford to pay, what the, you know, what that looks like, it's tough. So it's incredibly sensitive, and I think all of us are aware of the hardships that people are facing when it comes to financial ability, but this is where I would just stress to the council, there are some things, and Vicky will do a great job, I think, outlining it, I just met with her, and there was some pretty big concerns across the board in many departments, or franchise fees, things like this, where if you watch the City of Sparks, they actually are starting to really lean in to what, I guess, the current market conditions are, to where we can, we also need to be in line with them, or we've, we won't be able to pay for services, we won't be able to pay for the things that we need to pay for. And I love that the City of Reno has been very, I think, thoughtful, but at the same time, it puts us in a very precarious position to, I guess, sit back and keep our, I guess, our, what would we call it, our financial plan at 2012, 10? And so I think Vicky will do a great job, but I just want to reiterate that I think you make great points, Councilwoman Ebert, but I would just say, getting into budget, this is a great opportunity for everyone to really weigh in on when some of those other areas of financial impacts can drastically improve what we're going to do moving forward, or it can keep us in, I guess, back in the 2010s, or even before that.
Even before that, Madam Mayor.
I want to also say, you know, we've, we've made sure that the sewer bill goes up annually on CIP, and council doesn't know what we don't know. Like, I would have never thought to ask how our rent is that we're charging people, so I'm just concerned that there's other areas like this that council's not aware of. We talk about fees for permits, and, you know, we raise the fee for filing an appeal to $1,200, something that pretty much no one in my ward can afford, so to hear that we haven't kept tenant rent up to market value is, like, pretty shocking to me. So I, again, I don't know what I don't know, so I don't know where we should be keeping up at market rate, where potentially we have it, but finding out about this is pretty, like, upsetting. So, again, especially because of the budget situation we're in, and we've, you know, done layoffs, and, you know, and finding this out now is kind of not great news, so thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, if I could weigh in, I would actually say that this is a great opportunity, and this body gave the direction to us multiple times to be looking at contracts, which is how we found this. Part of the annual property plan is what allows us to be able to review these leases, and that was something that we didn't have direction before. So the leadership of this body that you gave us in February is what has afforded us the opportunity to find these and start getting things to market rent. So I would say that this isn't an oversight or something that council didn't know, I think that you actually gave us direction to help find these things, and that's how we are on our path to fixing.
Okay, so this is not discovered because we're potentially thinking about selling this property?
This was discovered through the annual property plan that you approved in February, is the direction you gave us to go look at all these properties, to sell, package, renew, and so through that annual process is how we're ensuring that we're staying up with market and evaluating the leases. You've also given direction multiple times to look at contracts. For example, that's why you had the item just a couple of weeks ago, for us to look at the baseball renegotiation, because you gave direction to staff to look at all of our contracts. So I would say we are following your direction and sorting and right-sizing as we go. So thank you for giving us that support to do that.
All right, Madam Mayor, final comment from me here, if I may.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so first of all, I just want to encourage you, you don't have to wait for direction from us to turn over every rock, to look for found money or ways that we can increase our revenues, so go at it, you know, be innovative, do your thing, don't wait for us to figure out that, you know, you to figure out, and then get direction last February, but I think you get it, is you don't have to, we're not tying your hands in terms of looking for funding. I just want to, on this issue, though, I just want to be really clear, I'm not recommending an immediate transfer to RDA, just so you understand in terms of staff discussion or direction. But what I am saying is, is if you come back, first of all, I'd like to not see it on consent, like, to see it on its own item under department items. Number two, so that we can discuss it, number two, if we decide to do RFP, and we give parameters about that, and we go out, we don't get a quick bite, I would at that point suggest doing the RDA, and this is the reason why. You told us that we had about $10 million in RDA II, and these are in RDA II?
Two of the three are, yes.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the ones that are.
Yep.
And I added them together, it's about $4 million. So just to be clear, if RDA bought them, that takes $4 million out of the $10 million that you have.
Correct.
And reduces the amount of money you have. On the other hand, that goes into city coffers, general fund, and what that means is that we have more flexibility and freedom to spend that money than the rules of the RDA.
Correct.
You see what I mean?
I do.
So it gives us money, like, if we want to do police, or we want to, you know, fix a train station, you brought up. Whatever we want to do, we have more freedom, less handcuffs, to invest that money in needed city infrastructure. So I just wanted to say that, so I wanted to be able to answer Councilmember Anderson's question, is just, I see us potentially getting more freedom to spend the same amount of money. The money didn't change, the same amount of money, but in different ways, so that's, just trying to answer the question.
I'm going to have City Manager Bryant weigh in, so that she can get us back on track.
Thank you, we're just going to.
For clarity.
Thank you, Mayor, we're going to sum up the direction, that we are going to take no action on items B.
N-11, 12.
10, 11, and 12 today, and instead, staff will go and create an RFP for each of these properties. We will question, do you want that RFP prop back to this body before issued, or do you want us to go ahead and prep it?
I think, my sense is yes, because.
We can bring it back.
If there's direction from the council, like, we'd like to see affordable housing, or we'd like, we don't care, any of that.
Okay, we will, we will put a draft together, we will bring all three back to this body for final tweaking before issued, is that, did I miss anything?
Just a second.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, moving on.
Understood, thank you so much. You can move on to your next item, Madam Mayor, staff understands what you're looking for, thank you.
Thank you, okay.
D-1, no, C-1.
Madam Mayor, we're on item C-1, Charlie 1.
All right, sounds good. All right, Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment on this item?
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, we have no public comment registered additionally, we've not received any comment on this item.
Okay, I'm going to hand it over to you, Lance.
Good morning, Madam Mayor.
Nice to see you, how's it going?
Nice to see you, too. Councilmembers, Madam Mayor, Lance Ferrato, Director of Licensing and Code Enforcement. This morning, we're here to talk about the International Property Maintenance Code. I'm going to be going through what it is, what it covers, and give you a little history on it, and then ask for some direction. So the last time this was updated was 2012. This is generally a six-year update, so this hasn't been, it This is generally a six-year update, so this hasn't been, it missed an update in 18. It is, it's on a three-year cycle, so that it comes through, and so, there have been three updates to the actual code itself before we've adopted anything. So, back in, like I said, 2012 is when the last version was updated. And then in 2014, council went forward and created a little bit of Reno-specific code for the downtown area. Those were the downtown property maintenance standards. So, most of this body has not seen this before, so that's why we're going to be a little bit open and overview of what it is. So, the International Property Maintenance Code, it's created by the International Code Council, and it sets minimum standards for maintaining existing structures. It addresses light, ventilation, sanitation, heating, fire safety, and general upkeep to ensure public's health and safety. It addresses minimum requirements, as I said, basic legal enforceable standards, covers all existing structures, residential, commercial, as well as the equipment that's associated with that property. It's a very broad scope, like I said, light, ventilation, heating, sanitation, protection from the elements, fire and safety hazards. And it also defines the responsibility, which is towards the property owner, the operator, or maybe even the occupants in certain cases. So, the IPMC is broken out into eight chapters. You can see here, I just discussed what exactly those are. When Reno adopts this, or has adopted it in the past, they've made certain changes to that code, just to make reference to certain standards, specific standards like referencing, instead of just the International Building Code, we reference our other chapters in RMC, so that we have, if there are any amendments in those, that we can stay on the same path. So, generally speaking, it's a template that we modify to our Reno standards and to how our Reno municipal code is set up. So, again, some of the regional amendments, they adopt building codes, they adopt building codes, we reference, liability for, for code enforcement officers is addressed. The disciplinary action is, is also outlined in IPMC, but we already have disciplinary action in RMC, so we just reference to that. We create some additional definitions, like you have the ability to address how big of a weed, what does a weed constitute? Currently, it's eight inches in our IPMC, so you can change that. So, this is, this is direction for code enforcement officers, as well as constituents and property owners to know how to maintain their properties. Then there's also some supplementary standards that get put in there. So, as for the downtown standards, like I said, council felt that there needed to be a little extra attention given to the downtown area. So, this additional chapter was created to make, make standards a little bit more tight on, on things like lighting, trash receptacles, queuing bar, queuing lines for nightclubs and bars, vestibles, alcoves, pigeon foul, new, new, nuisances, and landscaping standards. So, just a couple of quick examples, like there's the pigeon droppings in the, in that first picture, and then after somebody, code enforcement sees it, a lot of these are proactive in the downtown area, a lot of them are complaint-based. But just some before and after of what this would address, some, you know, signage and lighting, lighting being out, that's something of an alcove issue, where we get people that are sleeping in those areas or using them as a restroom, there are standards in there to make that blocked off. If it's not an exit that's being used, it gets, it gets boarded up like that and, and painted to, to match the standards. So, some of the recommendations that staff has come through, after looking at this and coming through to the downtown standard portion of it, are expanding on general provisions, addressing facade improvement and exterior windows, debris cleanliness, clarification on signage replacement. Sometimes there is, the sign code says that, well, you have to, you have to replace it if it's illegible or it's weathered. This just gets a little deeper on what exactly constitutes a need for a sign replacement, maintenance of lighting, and, and how that should be treated, all the lights on a, on a sign, like, can partial lights be out? Do all the lights need to be on? How bright do they need to be? Unauthorized outdoor speakers, you'll know downtown, you know, you hear some of the, the property owners are playing music out of that. Some of it's authorized, some of it's not. This gives the ability to, to tighten down on that. Same thing with vacant buildings and boarding standards, just gives a little bit more of a direction towards the property owners and to the city on what we can regulate and what we can't. And so, my recommendation at this point is to direct staff to return with an ordinance to update this to the 2024 edition, and then to discuss any potential direction that you have on what you'd like to see in the standard IPMC and in the downtown standards.
Okay.
So, with that, I'm ready for any questions.
All right, Lance, first of all, I cannot thank you enough for coming forward with this. I think this should probably be brought to every council meeting, especially if we're trying to revitalize downtown. This has been one of my biggest frustrations, and I don't think, quite honestly, we've understood the magnitude of the tools that we have or where we need to lean in the most. I am so grateful you did this. This is so long overdue. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You're awesome. With that being said, give me a picture of how much we have enforced, have held accountable. I, I want you to give me, now that you, I think we have a fresh set of eyes there, I think you're going to do an amazing job, but I want to hear your, your opinion.
Well, at this point, just an idea of how many cases code enforcement has, over the last fiscal year, they had about 3,700 cases. A little over 5100 of those were proactive, and that's something that we're trying to emphasize more, is more proactive cases and not just complaint-based, trying to get out there and, and obviously respond to complaints as they arise, but then also find stuff on our own, because that's, that's very important. With the staffing constraints that we have, you know, we, I think the numbers are looking good, and they're going up year over year, but, you know, staffing is a hindrance on, on how much we can actually accomplish. I do think that a lot of the downtown-specific area has gotten stronger as the RDA code, code enforcement officer has been down there, had eyes on the field. Being able to be dedicated to that area and, and be focused on it, I think that's been helping. So, as, as I, you know, begin to see more of this process and to see where we can, you know, shore up some deficiencies, then, then, yeah, I think I'll have a better picture.
Yeah, good job. I would just say two things. Downtown looks the way it does because we've allowed it to. Let's be really clear and honest, because, and, and I'm going to find out particularly properties like the Sundowner, I want to know how much, you know, what their code violations are. You have now got this liquor store on the corner that I am not happy about in any capacity. I want to know, when was the last time they've received notices? Because I keep getting the song and dance, oh, it's, the facades are happening, these things are happening. I don't see anything. So, again, these look the way they do because we've allowed them to look that way. So, we need to be really honest with ourselves and take responsibility. I've been saying that over and over. Things are changing. I think you're going to do an amazing job with this. I would also encourage this council, give you every single tool you possibly could use, especially in code enforcement, getting some other enforcement on the ground from the RDA. You can do that legally, and that would help you significantly. And that's what you're going to need. We'll have RDA discussions on every council meeting moving forward. So, Lance, you let us know what you need, but I'm very, very excited about this, and this could actually be the game changer and starting of the perception that everyone has wanted to see in downtown for a long time. So, great job. I'm, I'm, I just can't even begin to tell you, like, this is just long, long overdue, and you bringing it forward really sends a message. But I want to send a message to those property owners downtown who I have had direct conversations with and have, quite honestly, continued to allow their properties to become extremely dilapidated, dangerous, quite honestly. The Sundowner is very alarming. It is a health and safety hazard when their windows are flying out on the street, and so I think there should be some health department measures. I would be shocked if that building was not a teardown, and they have not been cooperative, and it's totally unacceptable, and there's several of them. I have a list that I reach out to them. They love to dodge me, but I'm going to be really honest with everyone, it's becoming tiresome. And I think that if we have not been coding where we need to, it's a public health hazard, but also it's the perception of downtown. So, Lance, I'm excited to see what you're going to accomplish, but I want you to make sure you have everything you need from us, the tools and RDA to help you get to where you need to be. I don't think one code officer specifically for downtown can do it all. So, good job.
Thanks.
Councilwoman Taylor, it's in her ward, I know she has some, probably some strong feelings, too, so would you like to put those on the record?
Sure, thanks, Madam Mayor. Obviously, we have some strong feelings about this. I want to be able to have a balance with being people to downtown, to invest in downtown, sensitive to costs. At the same time, what I need to know from you is, we have property owners downtown that aren't doing anything, they're sitting on their properties, and I'm just going to say, I'm so embarrassed at the Second Street, Virginia Street, bodega, and we are giving them money for the facade. That is not the intention of what we had wanted to do, and that's not if anybody is doing here. But I want to know, are we doing the maximum amount that we can possibly do? I hear people say, oh, put a blight tax, or imminent domain them, which, I'm, I'm just saying that's what I hear, I'm not saying imminent domain, but how do these standards compare with other downtowns moving forward? Is this what you need to get us where we are? And we have put a code enforcement officer downtown, which is something that we didn't have. We probably need two or three more, but, you know, the Rise Building, all, you're, you're very familiar of it. We've got to get serious about this.
Absolutely.
And I think this is what you are bringing to us, but I want to make sure that it is, and in line with what Mayor Sheehy said, do we need to give you more? Because we are, we're helping businesses improve their facade. We are giving money away for you to improve your business.
Sure.
And if you're not going to take advantage of that, well, then maybe you don't need to be doing business in downtown Reno.
Sure. To specific properties like that, with, with the restore funds, I know redevelopment works a lot with them, and, and it does have, you know, circuit breakers and cutoffs to where if they're not cooperating, or they're not going to use that money appropriately, then it would get rescinded. As far as, you know, other buildings around town and what we can do, having just the one code officer dedicated to downtown, generally speaking, we're on a, on a, two weeks, sometimes a week, of a reassessment of a fine or a fee. We could, we, municipal code gives us the ability to cite every day. We could, we could sound sub with a thousand every day.
Let's go. Cite them every day.
So, the problem that we get to with that is just the manpower.
Yeah.
So, having the one, is where it's like, okay, well, I got to go to-
And I see Zach everywhere.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
I mean, he's, he's walking around everywhere when I'm downtown. I mean, they're doing a great job. Let's cite him every single day.
Okay.
We, we have done everything we can at the City of Reno to help these businesses come on board with us. Again, if you don't want to be part of the team, if you don't want to be, take pride in your downtown, see you later.
Sure. Yeah, and those disciplinary actions, like I said, it does give us the ability to do, there are maximum fees per, per fine, but you can do it every day. That's actually in Reno municipal code, so that's a, if we wanted to change that at all, then, you know, or, or make, you know, tighter guardrails on that, then that's another code that could be brought forward.
Love it. Thank you.
Are those fees, are, do they fluctuate, or are they the same across the board, or is it for just various violations? What's-
They're basically the same. They're administrative fines that go 100, 250, 500, and that's, that's capped on residential, and then 1,000 for, is the cap for commercial. And then you can go 1,000 every day if you want it.
I, I want to bring that back immediately to this council, so that we can pull that trigger. Like I said, I've been calling these property owners. Little fun fact, the Byington Building, actually, was once, it's owned by a family, and there was a mayor at the time, Mayor Byington, I believe. And I even said he would be probably very disappointed in what that property looks like today. But I just thought that that was interesting, that their ancestor was one time the mayor of Reno. But I have called them. The, Brian McArdle and, and Ashley Turney have been in the room with me, making those phone calls. That's another thing, is maybe a more comprehensive look at, maybe at the list of our biggest deterrence of, I guess, our biggest bad actors in some capacity, because they like to dodge quite a bit. And then they also like to say, hey, well, this is why we don't want to do this or that in downtown. But they add to the problem, because they don't bring lighting, they don't turn on, you know, they don't activate their own properties. They also don't paint their own properties, they add to the constant blight, so they go like this. But I think we're at a point where we're just fed up with it. I've tried to work with them, I've had them in this building, we've had long conversations, they tell me, they, they will, they will. It's, it's, quite honestly, it's a lot of lip service. So, but again, it's looked this way, they've gotten away with it for years and years and years, because they've been allowed to. So, I, I'm grateful for the support over here, and I think, you know, I'd really like to see this council be beyond strict.
Mayor, can I ask for a couple of clarifying questions? First of all, you said to-
I would bring it back.
What do you want brought back?
I want it brought back about what it takes to trigger a fine daily on properties. I want to know how many times we have made those touchpoints with them.
Sure.
What the communication has been like. I know that Brian McArdle and Ms. Turney have been doing the same type of work, and I don't see those property owners moving. I think-
Well, I think we can just make a change, that you can actually now decide to implement a daily fine process versus whatever two weeks. Okay. I want to make that clear for the record.
No, that you don't need council direction.
I do not.
You don't?
I do not.
No, like we said, the, the biggest thing is, and it also, when you administer fees and fines, consistency across the board is, is huge. So, if you're just a small business, and, you know, let's just say you go out of town for, for two weeks, and something, something happens, and now we start hitting you with citations every day, and you come back from vacation, like, I was gone for a week, and I got $10,000 in fines, like, I don't have that.
Right.
But then if you go to the bigger ones and say, like, I'm going to hit you with all these fines and fees, at some point, it becomes cost prohibitive, because you're like, well, now you've got $50,000 in fees, and I, I don't have that. The door, the door's not open. So, it is a fine line, and, and it's-
Right.
You know, being able to administer those fees appropriately and timely is, is something that's tricky that we need to, that we need to settle.
And I'm going to be really, really clear here, this is not the intent to disrupt, and especially small business owners, they struggle. But what I'm talking about here are the continued repeat offenders.
Sure.
I want everyone to really understand that. And we have a process, and we've, and I would say, anyone that wants to argue this, we have a paper trail of how many times we have reached out to these businesses, how many times we've called them to get them to help assist in cleaning up their properties. And you will see we've been lenient. So, we give you a lot of leeway, but this is years and years and years of continued, I think, abuse and neglect of their, their own properties, but also to the city. So, we will make sure, we will work with every small business owner. Matter of fact, I think bodegas had a lot of leeway, a lot, because they have kept saying, oh, we're going to change it, we're going to, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. What is going on? Matter of fact, they came to council and said they're going to be a mini Whole Foods. That is anything but a mini Whole Foods. So, I'm just saying, you need to have the tools to let them know that we are serious. You also have some, I think it's just the continued owners, the same owners, a handful of owners in downtown that have been your biggest violators. So, now you can, you have the, I guess, the consent of the council, once we, I guess, I don't even know if we have to take action on this, it doesn't sound like we do, but we want you to know that, do whatever you possibly can to let them know we're serious.
You do need action, Mayor.
Okay, yeah, I guess we do need action, but I'm just saying, Lance, we want to be helpful to you, and also make sure they understand we're serious.
Yep.
It's so frustrating, so frustrating.
Yep.
And they want a property hoard. And then, not only do they want a property hoard, go knock on their doors, ask them how much they're charging for those properties. Their prices are so inflated, it's ridiculous. So, it's just wrong. Okay, sorry, I get so crazy about this, because people don't know how hard I've worked on this, and I can't get them to do a darn thing, but why should they when they don't have to pay a fine? And these are the continued bad actors. It's not the small businesses. The small businesses tried, junkie tried to go in there.
Sure.
Can we talk about, can we ask a question about hearing officer process?
Yeah, oh, that's a, that's a great one. Let me get their questions, and then I'm going to come back and ask you about the hearing officer process.
Sure.
Because that one was a really frustrating, well-
They're not aligned.
Yeah, they're not aligned, definitely not aligned. Okay, go ahead, Councilman Reese.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ferrato, thank you for the presentation. So, obviously, you have some very passionate council members who really are thinking critically about our community. Madam Mayor has often said that, you know, the, the thriving heartbeat of a city is its downtown. I think downtown is going through some processes that have changed over the years, and downtown will never be what it was in, you know, 1964, but it needs to be something that it can be in 2026, so we have to have a vision for that. So the agenda item is a question about updating the downtown standards to go from the 2012 version to a 2024 version. Is that what I'm understanding?
So the property maintenance code in general is what the ICC creates, this template. We need to update that to the 2024 standards.
But it's not just for downtown.
Correct, citywide. Additionally, the citywide, the downtown standards were something council implemented separately as an exhibit, an attachment to the IPMC. So that's what we're looking for direction on, if there's additions and changes to that.
So in 2012, we adopted the last version of the IPCC. In 2014, we adopted a subset of that specific to downtown. Is that accurate?
Accurate.
Okay. So now, what are your professional recommendations today? Or is today not the day for you to bring them? Because I'm trying to understand the disconnect is that you have an agenda item that's just asking us to tell you to get going.
Yes.
But you also have council members who've got 1,000 ideas piling in on you because they're very passionate about it. I'm trying to understand what our role in is it today? What are you, what are you making recommendations in your professional judgment as the staff that does this work each day?
So after going through this a little bit with staff, and they've been working on this for a little while, these were some of the recommendations that they said, enhancing some of this area. So they, the downtown standards are broken up into these right here. Now, they're more stringent than the rest of the city, is basically. They're not, aside from like nightclubs and bars, and really, the rest of it really applies citywide, but these are just a little bit more stringent because council was focused on revitalizing downtown, making it cleaner, making an emphasis on it. So as staff has gone through that 2014 set of standards, they've noticed that there are things that have, you know, are arguable when you come into the violation space or things like that. So, or things that they think could be done better, that they've seen.
So those are six ideas that you're just sort of spitballing off the top of your head. You're saying, these look like these could be updated. If you give us the authority to go forward and open this chapter up, we'll come back with potentially these. Plus, there may be others that come about in your review. Is that accurate?
Exactly. And then on top of that, anything else that comes to the top of mind with council right now?
And so the question, I suppose, then, is really that. There must be best practices around the country that are related. We aren't inventing anything. It's like the reinvention of the wheel. So I'm trying to ask you, you've got to come to us with not just these six, but hearing what the council colleagues' concerns are about blighted properties, about boarded up properties, properties that clearly are not being made code-ready, windows blowing out of buildings, all those things. You're gonna go back and do some work as a team, and you're gonna figure out what can we do to address those specific things? And then you're gonna come back to us and say, here's what we've come up with. Some of the ideas we've come up are these six plus these seven.
Correct.
And then we'll be in a position to evaluate them reasonably, fairly, accurately, with a business impact statement.
No business impact statement for this. No, it's not required by NRS for this.
Okay. Perfect. Again, my issue is that I think that we have a great and bright future, but we need to know all the tools we can use. And so it's not really the best thing for me to say, here's the tool I think I could use. I think your professional judgment has to give us some of those tools. I'll certainly go out and research what other communities are doing, see if they've used innovative things, and maybe I'll find one that you didn't think of, I suppose, in the interim. But I'm trusting you to bring those examples back so that when we revise the entirety of this chapter, it will reflect our current way we see the downtown environment and also the other environments.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure, Lance, I understand the boundaries of downtown. So does it go south of California? Or what is the cutoff south?
Specifically, this was created, when this was created in 14, it was RDA, the RDA space, RDA 1.
RDA 1 is considered.
Was considered downtown.
And can we redefine that as part of this process?
Absolutely. Yeah. You know, delineating boundaries is always a little bit tricky, but we can do it.
Well, the downtown's growing, frankly, and we also have midtown. And what applies in downtown may very likely apply in midtown. I don't know, but let me give you an example of something I'd like to see on the list that's kind of at that border. When I first came on council, I got a series of unusual calls. There were people that were whispering on their phone, not wanting anyone in the building to hear that they were calling me. And what they were calling me about was that they lived in a multi-story building, 10 floors, and the elevators were broken, and had been broken for a long time. And they were broken to the point that, sorry, they were broken to the point that we had people in wheelchairs that had no elevators to get up in the buildings, and they were living outside in parking lots. Their neighbors were carrying them up and down stairs in wheelchairs. And I dug into it, and I found out while the state has an elevator code that says elevators have to be repaired by official elevator repair people that are blessed, it doesn't say how you have to keep these things in working order. And they can be out forever. There seems to be no code about this. I brought it up to council, there seemed to be no path forward. They would say, oh, it's a state problem. It's not really. It's about maintenance of buildings. And I understand, we've had elevators broken here, we've had elevators broken in parking garages, sometimes very hard to get parts. But we want to know that they're on their way to repairing the elevator, it's not just gonna be out of service for a year. And when it's the only elevator, that's really problematic. So one thing I'd like to see is elevators addressed. I'd like to see where it's appropriate, backup generators, so that if power goes out in critical facilities, whether they're downtown or wherever they are, it could be a new behavioral health unit that happens to be four-story building. Or something where we have people living, you know, in a treatment facility, or something like that. I want to make sure that we have the proper backup, because I've run into that as well. And I see Chris here, but before you, I only have so much time before you answer. The other things I'd like to see that I didn't see on your list was fencing. Maybe it's already there, but I don't think, a lot of it is sort of windblown and falling apart. And then on the empty lots, like, in this code, is that where we deal with empty lots? And, you know, the weeds, or what they look like? Or even, as Councilmember Taylor and others have mentioned, a blight tax or an undeveloped tax? So those three issues to start, the elevators, empty lots, fencing.
Chris Pinger, you're Director of Development Services, for the record. Great questions. And I just wanted to kind of highlight to this body of where this all kind of started and where it began. Most of you remember, this was all one department at one time. Community development had code enforcement, had business license, had all of those things combined into one. And you can understand the significance and how overwhelming all of these different issues are. Lance has been courageous enough to champion the code enforcement piece, and we're doing everything we can to help him. So many of the things that you're talking about either overlap into Title 18 building code, our existing building code, or exactly with the IPMC. So what we're doing, and we're working, we're meeting until we're blue in the face on all of these same items of how they overlap. And what we've done historically in the city of Reno is we fixed one section, but we didn't address the other three that coincide with the same problem. So what we're doing now is going back, you've seen a ton of changes to Title 18, and we're gonna continue to do those to make sure that they match with the building code, the IPMC, and what the, and existing building code all tie it all together so they're not conflicting to where, what we're gonna talk about soon in the appeal process, how those end up getting exploited. Elevators and backup generators, those are, depending on the date of construction, whether they were required or not. We do have tools in place today, and I know the exact property you're mentioning, I was very heavily involved in that one. We do have tools today to make those people above four stories either be relocated or we shut that part of the building down. We have those tools today in our current adopted codes.
Where we didn't before, is what you're saying?
We did, we just didn't have, we didn't, we didn't pursue that. And I think we have the support from the body more so than we did back then to be able to enforce that and force that hand to make sure that those people are either relocated until the elevator is put back in play. But emergency generators, nothing, we don't have anything in place today to retroactively go back in to make sure that they install them. But from 1997 on, all buildings that need backup generators have backup generators installed and they're tested in.
And maybe later, you can just give us a list of who does need it. Is it critical facilities, or?
Hundred percent. And there's a, there's a list of all of those.
I figured. And then, Lance, what about the fencing, the empty lots, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, Lance Ferrato, for the record. So as far as vacant lots go, they get treated like any other property. If there's a complaint or a proactive case that's, you know, it's dilapidated, there's weeds, there's trash, there's vehicles, whatever it is, that gets addressed as any normal sort of code enforcement case. I don't know that we need specific, anything to change to that.
You think we have adequate regulation?
On those, yeah, it's a matter of being identified and being able to get out there and get the property owner to do it.
And then are you the guy now? I missed that part, I'm so sorry.
I am, I am the guy now.
Okay. Okay. And then you have a new person that's just focused on, quote, downtown, or RDA, I guess.
Correct, there's somebody that's specifically dedicated to downtown RDA. As far as the fencing goes, we don't have any, and I assume you're talking about fencing that goes around properties that are vacant or that are being under repair, that kind of thing?
Right.
There are no standards for that. It's, the standard is that the property has to be secured.
Well, this is why I'm saying, should we have a standard? You listed a bunch of stuff.
And you could, you could identify what you wanted to see specifically in a fence. We could bring back some, some sort of best practices and that. You know, we have to weigh in with PD, what do they want to be able to, do they want to go to a C3 or whatever?
I'm not saying block it up, I'm just saying, should we have improved standards?
But most cities now require you to have actually facades that are attractive. I actually have asked for this several times. Ashley Turney knows that I, this has been one of my biggest pet peeves. When you have a chain link fence around something and it's coming down, and now projects, if you go to any city, especially if you're doing a new project, they, you know, they show you kind of what's coming, or they use artists, ways to really, I think, give a different perception. Not to mention, I also think, you know, you can use that versus one of the properties downtown that I saw. They put boards on the windows, and I get why they do it. But it gives a terrible, terrible perception of safety concerns, right? When you, when your windows and front doors are boarded, or have iron on them. These, yeah, exactly. I know you know all this, so Lance, but those are the things that I think would dramatically help the perception of safety and cleaning up things. And so I just want to say thank you so much because it's gonna be so helpful. The one I want to tie in, and then we're gonna talk about the appeals, I assume this would also go with plumbing, because I also get complaints, there's been several of them downtown that have continued plumbing issues. And the owner of the building will typically put it on to the tenant when really those plumbing issues are so deteriorated, I guess, over decades of them not taking care of their property. And then they put it on, and they'll say, oh, it's in the lease that you're responsible for plumbing. Can you speak a little bit about that? Because there's one motel in particular that we see this with. So what does that look like?
So currently, the plumbing standards are just referenced from the IPMC into the city's, you know, building codes that we've adopted. So as far as like who's responsible for that, I'm not positive that the IPMC or any of the building codes says who actually has to be responsible. Like you said, it could be something that's in the lease agreement. Obviously, it's pretty, it's hard to believe that, you know, you're gonna charge a tenant with the responsibility of replacing a sewer line or something like that. Like, that doesn't seem very, doesn't seem very reasonable. I don't know the specific leases you're referring to, but we can definitely point to making sure that, I don't, obviously, we can't govern how somebody signs a lease or how they create that. But we can control what is, what is expected of that plumbing system because it's referring to the building codes that are already instated.
That's right. And the NRS actually does have, actually, quite a long definition on this, where, you know, this happens quite often, but people don't know that. Because you're, I guess you're required to pay for sort of standards of things that were in your control. But whenever it's 25 feet down, you clearly can tell that's within your infrastructure and not on the tenant, right? That would tell you, that's not the tenant's fault. That's what's been deteriorating for a very long time. And then charging the tenant for, like, a rotor ruder or someone to come out to unclog it for a temporary timeframe, and then it continues to happen over and over and over and over again. But the meantime, you're charging your tenants when it's the full-blown infrastructure with inside the building. So that's another way that tenants get taken advantage of. But thank you, thank you, I really appreciate it. And then I would just stress, Lance, this is something I think we want to keep our eye on. I would love to have you come back at every council meeting, tell us what you're doing, how, what we can, what tools we can activate in the RDA to get you more bodies and help, whatever you need to do. I think this council would be supportive. We obviously have to probably bring it back to this body and those types of things. But I think this is our, our time to get it right, and with all the momentum. So I think you're gonna do an amazing job. So thank you so much. Let's go to these appeals. I don't know, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Questions? Yeah. So I had a couple questions regarding, like, the enforcement. Like, would we be able to have a distinction between people leasing a space and the property owners? Because I know there's been some times where maybe it was a tenant that was creating issues potentially. Or, you know, we have some instances where it's the property owner and there isn't a tenant. Would we get into that type of nuance with this, or does that exist already?
Well, when it comes to these kind of standards, it's generally all directed towards the property owner. If it's a tenant, like, if it's a business, we can, something that they're doing, we could go after the business owner. But with the property itself, really, generally speaking, even if it is the tenant causing the problem, going after the property owner is generally a good way to get them to go into compliance because they have, as the landlord, they have the power, generally speaking, of the tenant. So in these cases of property maintenance, it's almost, it's almost always going towards, to the property owner's self.
And will there be, like, any kind of proactive kind of code enforcement? Like, I know that we knew there was a lot of issues with the Lake Mill Lodge for a significant amount of time before there was a task force, like, a couple of years, I think, that went in and did some, you know, cleanup. Is there any kind of proactive enforcement like that, that's looking for any kind of violations of that nature so it doesn't get to that point?
Sure, yeah. For, specifically with motels, we do have a motel inspection program. We're currently revising how that's set up. It has been something that's been ongoing since, for a better part of a decade at least. And we're, I'm working with building and fire and code enforcement together to see, how can we make this a much, if more efficient process? One where we can be more, we can hold land, or the owner's more accountable, and we can see more rooms, address things before they turn into disasters like you're talking about. So, yeah, that is a process that's in place. We're just trying to, we're gonna, we're fine tuning it, tweaking it right now.
Okay. And then also, fines that are already out there. What happens if somebody just says, I'm not gonna pay my fine? Like, what kind of consequences are there? Are there additional fees or fines, you know, get added on? Is there any kind of way that we can enforce the payment of these fines?
Yeah, generally speaking, once we've reached an exhaustive point of fining, the property gets leaned. So, you know, obviously, that holds the landowner in a tight spot where they can't refinance, they can't sell. But that's ultimately where it ends up, if we can't collect.
Okay, so that's for the property owner. What about a business?
Business licenses are a little bit different. We generally don't have issues like that. When we do come, if a business license owner is not paying their fees, they're probably not last, they're probably not come, you know, gonna last as a business very long. We generally don't have to chase people down very long for business license fees. We do cite them, similarly, it's how we do the administrative citations for code, so they do get fined. And then ultimately, we, for lack of a better term, we can hold the business license hostage and not renew it until they pay.
Is there any kind of consequences for a business operating without a license? Let's say a business gets all these fines, and City of Reno says, we're not gonna renew your license, but they just carry on, what happens?
Yeah, so ultimately, and we run into this every, every so often, it is a misdemeanor crime to operate a business without a license. So if we want to take it to that, to that level, we can work with PD, we can work with City Attorney's Office, we can work with our, you know, our internal procedures to cite them and make it a criminal matter.
Okay, all right. How often does that happen?
Very, very rare.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I will have some other questions, but I'm over my time, so, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I didn't know if you wanted a motion for this at this time, or if we have other questions, sorry. So I'm not running the meeting, I was just asking a question.
Go ahead. And I want you guys to have that.
Okay. If I can go again, I wanted to know, like, is there a way we can have a program for these vacant buildings to get, like, murals on them? Like, I know part of the problem we have is this ugly blight. And I know that Old Harris Building, the DRP put up that, you know, kind of banner around the chain link fence. And it would be great if we could just do some kind of mural on that side of the building until something is completed with it. Is there a way that we could, like, kind of make that mandatory, like?
I can look into it and, you know, work and see what possibilities are as far as like requirements for fencing, for covering, you know, blighted buildings.
I mean, it's kind of like putting lipstick on a pig, right, to just paint over it? But at least maybe it could look nicer than just, you know, rundown building on the exterior. So I don't know if that's possible to make that something they have to do? Or makes it so that the city of Reno has the right to do a mural or something like that on the building? Just to make it look a little nicer?
Sure, I can look into it.
Okay, thank you. Oh, do you want a motion now? Oh, sorry, I was gonna, I wasn't sure if you.
I was going to try, I wasn't sure if you.
We want to structure this because we want to talk about.
Appeals, yeah. Let's talk about the appeals.
So just the general process?
Yeah.
So essentially, almost any action the city takes in, in business license or code enforcement, as far as administrative action can be appealed, whether it be a, just a grievance of a fee or a denial or a suspension or administrative fine, anything can be appealed, basically. When that appeal, the, when, when the person is noticed, they have 10 days to appeal, they come in, file the paperwork and then it gets put on a hearing. We have three hearing, administrative hearing officers that rotate through the calendar. They'll hear the case, deliberate. More often than not, fines get waived. Could be, could be some, could be all. Obviously, they're extenuating circumstances that these people are allowed to plead their case and it, it is, it's everyone's right to be able to discuss that and the hearing officer makes his judgment.
But that's also been part of the problem.
Sure.
Is that the council has not had any oversight, just so everyone is clear, the council has not had any oversight over that process and that's what has allowed a lot of problems to continue to manifest. I think the council should have oversight and they can work with properties or also they can say, we've had enough, we've given you, you know, numerous chances to clean it up and we're serious. So I, and I don't know, I'd have to ask our city attorney, Carl Hall, how, is that something separate we would have to bring back or can we, how does that work, Carl?
That'd be a code change that you'd have to bring back.
Is it in this code?
Sure.
Or a separate code?
It's separate. It's chapter one.
Okay.
And, and that would, that'll apply to, to any sort of fee that the city administers. So there's, there's a, or not fee, but like a fine and appeal process, that's all laid out in chapter one, title one, sorry.
Okay.
And so, yeah, that would be a separate bring back.
Okay. So that would be great.
And just to touch on the, the fact that, that the city does currently also have the ability to appeal a hearing officer's decision. So if we, if we go and we take something and they appeal and we're not happy with the administrative hearing officer's decision, we do have the right to appeal that too.
Does the council decide if we?
To Muni Court.
To Muni Court. Does the council decide if we appeal or not?
No.
No.
Not currently. So if that was something that was going to be brought into the fold, then yeah, that's a.
Who decides that we're going to appeal it?
Oh, who, i, i, basically, it comes into an administrative decision if we think that, you know, that, that the case is, was, was misheard or it holds ground, you know, holds enough water to take to court. And obviously, we'd work the City Attorney's Office and they would say, this isn't something that we should, that, that we would have a, a chance at, at overturning, so maybe we wouldn't go that route.
Okay. Great.
But it's case by case and it would, you know, the decision may internally.
Well, you guys are actually very lenient, you're easy to work with. I know Chris is one of the best. He gives, you work with everyone over and over and over again, but there comes a point where I think you have to say enough is enough. So I want to see that come back for discussion and we'll talk about what the council wants to see, but I think if the council has some control over those appeals, then we can take immediate action. I can think of one property and problem in particular that downtown, and they should have been, they were very unhappy that the council could not take any action. That was problematic, that it was out of our hands. And so if the, if the council wants to move some of these initiatives, particularly in downtown, to a level that we're, we mean business, then you want to put something in place that you guys have control. So let's bring that back because you can't put that on this, that's a separate.
Right.
Sounds like a separate code, right, Carl? So, okay. Awesome. That being said, I'm going to send it to you. Hold on one second. Go ahead, Councilwoman Niebert.
Yeah. Yeah. So I know that we've frequently said code enforcement officers pay for themselves. I think that we should, you know, do what we can to support having as much code enforcement as possible and I know that we have some issues with noise downtown. I think it would help with things like that too, to have more code enforcement officers. I think it is too much for the staff we have currently. So I don't know if that's something council can do to add more staff there, but I think that would be really helpful for a lot of reasons. The other thing I wanted to ask, and I kind of lost it, hold on. Oh, I know what it was. Fire. When fire does inspections and they issue a ticket because maybe a business's extinguishers are expired, what happens with that? Does that roll up under you? What kind of enforcement is there with that? I've had some questions from people regarding, you know, just the legality of it, like, does there need to be warrants? I mean, I, I don't mean to sound crazy, but that's legitimately a question that I've received. So I just wanted to know like how that, you know, works with your type of code enforcement.
Sure. So current city policies, if, if the fire, if a fire inspection occurs or some sort of fire fee, they have their processes for collection and if ultimately they cannot collect, they pass it off onto business license. And then we, again, we, we put that on the business license so that the person cannot renew until they pay that fee.
Okay.
This is something that was brought up in the, the fire audit a year or two ago on just how we can make that process a little more efficient and staff is still working through a way to make it collectible quicker because a lot of times if that happens, they may try to collect, but then ultimately ends up on a business license a year and a half, two years later and the person's kind of like, when was this? I don't, I don't even know what you're referring to. So we're trying to make that better, but that's the current process.
Okay. And do the business owners get like a clear statement of what the violations were? Do they, are they really informed with this is specifically what is, you know, needs to be fixed?
Sure. In, in business license, I've, we've got our templates down to where I think it's very specific on what's going on and if we don't, if it's some anomaly of a violation, then we'll write something special. Code enforcement has the, a current method where they, they deliver the message of what was violated and then tell them how they can remedy that.
Okay.
Still working on templates and things like that and how we can make stuff, you know, smoother and more clear to anybody that appeals or that gets violations, that they can fully understand what the problem is.
Okay. And is there a way that the downtown partnership, that additional assessment on property values down there, is there a way that any of those funds could be used to help with code enforcement for that area?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. That's, that's, that's something I can look into, but I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Thank you.
So Lance, before I make the motion, I just want to say you are phenomenal. You've done an amazing job, really just exemplary.
Well, thank you.
Perfect.
The teams are great and we've got a lot of support and good people, so we're going to get straight out.
Really appreciate you. You did a fantastic job and thank you for your work. And Chris, you're okay too. So Madam Mayor, if you are ready for a motion.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Staff recommends council directs staff to re, return with an ordinance. Staff recommends council, what? I direct staff to return with an ordinance, introduction amending RMC chapter 1405 to reflect the 2024 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, including any regional modifications as discussed. Second. The motion, I have a second. Go ahead, Councilwoman Niebert.
So I just want to say that I'm going to support this motion, but I just want to make sure that this doesn't turn into like what happened with the business licensing where we approve this and then the next thing, you know, we have something posted on the website that's a 600-page revision of, you know.
Sure.
Something at City of Reno and we have angry businesses contacting us. I just want to make sure that this isn't opening the door to something way beyond the scope of what we're talking about here because, you know, it says RMC chapter 14.05, but it also says, you know, code including any regional modifications as discussed.
Sure.
Like, I, I just want to make sure that that's not opening the door to like literally everything.
Sure. Well, just to put you at ease, the, the IPMC is about 45 pages, covers all those chapters that I talked about. The modifications that would be made to that are going to be pretty, pretty minimal because they're just deletions, insertions that are Reno-specific. The downtown property maintenance code is three pages, I think.
Okay.
So it's, it's not, it's, it's not something that's going to be overwhelming by any means.
Okay.
Lance, I think she brings up a good point. Let me ask you this. Could we also, and I say we start maybe like in a way that it's, I guess, doable, obtainable, right?
Hmm.
And what I mean by that, could we start with saying these properties are in the RDA, these properties, you know, in certain areas that have become constant nuisances? Is that possible too?
Being.
I assume we could put that, like if they're in the RDA, then we have these tools. I think obviously you have to be consistent, but I think you have other ones that raise to a level of beyond that capacity and concern. We will work with everyone, but when it comes to a point of years and years and years of, of these property owners doing nothing, then what?
Right.
Well, as long as we can document it.
Yeah.
So I'm super excited you're going to run with this.
Okay.
You're going to do a great job. And you come from the gaming control board.
Right.
So he knows what he's doing. All right. So I had a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. And now you can see how long of the time we took of yours and how much we care about this topic.
For sure.
So this is a good one. Thanks, Lance.
You're welcome.
Great job. Thanks, Chris.
Your media is here for the next.
Yeah.
We might want to hear a break.
Okay. Grace, how are you? Madam Clerk.
All right. Madam Mayor, we're on item D1, David, one.
Okay. Item D1. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We don't have any public comment registered. We did receive one letter in advance of this meeting in support of this item.
Okay. Thank you so much. Grace, take it away.
All right.
Madam Mayor, before we do that, if you would open the public hearing.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Yes, we will now open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given and correspondence received?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And correspondence received.
Proper notice was given and as previously stated, we did receive one letter of support.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Grace, it's now your turn.
Yes. Good afternoon, counsel. Grace McAden, senior management analyst for the record. I'm here to talk about a text amendment on childcare. So I wanted to start with some background just to remind you of where we've been and kind of why I'm here today. So in July of 2025, so July of this year, council initiated a text amendment to remove barriers for childcare providers. From September to October of this year, we did some public outreach, we went to all the NABs, we held two virtual stakeholder meetings to kind of get any feedback that the community might have. And then November of this year, we went to planning commission, which they ultimately unanimously recommended approval of the draft ordinance that's in front of you today. So to provide some context as to why this is an issue and why staff was directed to work on removing barriers for providers, I wanted to provide some data of kind of where we're at today. And I think anybody who has kids, knows someone who has kids, knows how difficult it is to find childcare, especially in our region. And so this shouldn't be news to anyone, but about 72% of Nevadans live in a childcare desert and what that means is there's more kids than there are slots for daycare. So, and we hear this all the time when they move to Reno and they can't find daycare, they can't find childcare. It's a, you usually have to get on a list before you even know you're pregnant, so it's very difficult to find childcare in this area. Nevada experienced about a 55% decline in childcare from 2018 to 2024. I think notably, those are the COVID years. So we knew that was happening. A lot of them shut down because it was really difficult to run a childcare. A lot of people started working from home and thought they could work from home and watch a kid, which I can't do, but maybe they were successful in doing that. So we saw a lot of, a lot of child cares close between those years and we haven't seen them open up at that rate. And then Nevada is the eighth least affordable state for infant care. Something that I thought was pretty interesting is if you're paying for an infant to go to daycare, those are the lowest ratios, so it's usually the most expensive. It's often more expensive than it would cost to send a kid to University of Nevada or UNLV, so that's expensive.
Wow. And here's a big comparison, right? So let's talk about RMC, Reno Municipal Code and kind of how we regulate it today. So we essentially have three different uses that are under the umbrella of childcare. We have in-home childcare, this is anywhere from five to 12 children, it's an accessory use. Sometimes you'll see these pop up in your neighborhood, they're pretty minor impact-wise, it's, it's usually somebody who's watching their kid and some friend's kids and they end up accumulating maybe six or seven kids to watch. Then we have workplace childcare. This is new with our recent code update. We added this because we wanted to encourage companies like IGT or Patagonia, some companies we hear of that offer childcare for their workers. And so it's accessory to a primary business. Again, we see these impacts are relatively low because people are already going to work and they're bringing their kids with them. And then we have the childcare center. This is anything that's not the previous two uses we've talked about. These are typically larger scale, they're the Goddard School or something that's, you know, the primary use is a daycare or childcare center. So when we talk about what are the barriers for providers that we see in code? So for in-home childcare, it requires a minor conditional use permit in all zoning districts and it has some additional standards that these providers have to abide by. We see the same requirement for workplace childcare, so they have to go through this minor conditional use permit in any zoning district that they wanted to open up. And then for a childcare center, it's a conditional use permit in residential zones and then they also have some additional standards. I think it's important to note that our scope and our authority related to childcare is really, really limited. Most of the regulations coming from the state as far as safety, ratios, buffering, I think they have some health department, or I know they have some health department guidelines that they also have to follow. So they're going through all of this regulation at the state level and oftentimes they don't need, know they need these additional permits until they've already paid the lease and they're basically ready to move in. And so it's an additional cost, time, and oftentimes, especially if you're watching six kids at your house, they haven't budgeted for that. And so just to kind of dive into what those permits are, for in-home childcare, if it's a minor conditional use permit, it takes 30 days, it's a staff review process, so it won't come to planning commission or this body for a review, but staff reviews and approves or denies it. It's about $4,300 and the biggest complaint or the biggest worry we've heard is there's no guarantee of approval. And so it's really hard for some of these providers to put in the risk and to put in the investment without knowing that they'll get some sort of approval. Same thing with workplace childcare, same permit. And again, these companies are thinking, why would we go through this process if we, if we don't know we'll get, get this approved? And then childcare center, it's a conditional use permit in residential zones, it's a little bit more onerous of a process. It takes about 65 days, it's just under $5,000. And again, there's that risk that there's no guarantee of approval. So when we looked at our ordinance and we looked at our zoning code, we thought, well, those are really the barriers that we have, so let's look at removing or reducing those barriers. We went back and looked, we don't want any unintended consequences of just saying, sure, you don't have to go through this process, anyone and everyone can open up. Anyone and everyone can open up. So we looked at some past minor conditional use permits that we've done. There's very few, maybe five or three in the past five years. And most of those were withdrawn because they ended up not being able to pay or not being able to complete the process. So that alone tells us, okay, we're doing something right here if we're not seeing these come through. But we looked at some of those past permits. We looked at some other jurisdictions, and we added some development standards of things that we would typically add to those permits as conditions. So we just added them straight to code. So that way, these providers know if I meet A through B or A through Z requirements, I know I can open up. I know I'll get approval. Just knowing that these requirements are in front of me, it's easier for them to kind of follow that process. So we removed the minor conditional use permit for in-home and workplace, so they could go straight to a building permit or straight to a business license. And then for childcare center, we thought, those can be a little bit more impactful. They're larger scale. Let's keep it, keep some sort of review, but reduce it from a CUP to an MUP. So what that means is they no longer have to come to Planning Commission, but it's still a staff review and approval. We still notice it. The neighborhoods noticed. We can still add special conditions. And then we modified the development standards to kind of match the first two uses as well. So when I talk about we modified development standards, what does that mean? For all three uses, we thought, what are the impacts that we would anticipate with a childcare center that's opening up next door, behind your, in your backyard? We wanted to make sure that pickup and drop-off plans are required. So just show us, if you have six kids or if you have 12 kids, how are you managing that pickup and drop-off? It's usually about the same time, and so just making sure they have a plan and that we're comfortable with that plan. Outdoor lighting is limited when adjacent to residential uses, so making sure that you don't have a floodlight in someone else's backyard. And then a six-foot-tall fence when adjacent to residential. So just, you know, the state does have requirements for that to protect the kids, but also protecting the neighbors from anything there as well. And then outdoor play hour restrictions when adjacent to residential, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, which we saw was pretty consistent with best practices. So most of our feedback was positive, which was great. Most people are excited about this. They know that it's a problem. They have family members that struggle with it, or they're struggling with it themselves. We worked with the Children's Cabinet to say, kind of, what are the problems? What are you hearing? And this isn't kind of all we're doing. We're also working with the Children's Cabinet to come up with a pamphlet. So if you wanted to open up a childcare facility, we can just hand it to you, and you know these are the steps I have to go through. We did receive some recommendations for some additional buffering. A six-foot-high fence should be solid instead of kind of see-through. We brought that to our Planning Commission. Ultimately, staff's recommendation is, we're comfortable with either, but just understand that the more we add to these providers, kind of, the harder it becomes, the more expensive it is. So just keeping that in mind, and that's why, it's in the staff report, but that's why we ultimately didn't add it to this ordinance. So I briefly mentioned this, but at the November 5 Planning Commission, we had some discussion regarding safety, fencing and buffering, and some HOA restrictions. The safety was mostly just making sure that there was regulation happening at the state level, that if we remove this, it's not just a free-for-all and making sure those kids are still safe, which they are. And then fencing and buffering, we talked about that public comment and just making sure there is some buffering. If you wanted to increase it, you can. Like I said, Planning Commission ultimately decided against that, just because it's more of a barrier for providers. And then HOA restrictions, we've talked about this in the past, but there was a bill that was introduced this last legislative session to override any HOA restrictions that would prohibit a childcare provider, and that was ultimately vetoed. So if an HOA restricts a childcare provider, we can't override that. And yep, they unanimously recommended approval. All right, so we're at the first reading or introduction today. Based on any suggestions or changes that this body recommends, we'll incorporate those changes before second reading, and we're anticipating second reading in January of next year, not 2025. I apologize. The recommended motion is on your screen. I'm available for.
All right. Thank you so much. Great job, Grace. And I'm sure this is something you can identify with, being a new mommy yourself.
Definitely.
Right?
Yeah. I don't even know who's watching her right now. I can't afford childcare. No kidding.
It is very expensive. It is outrageous. Outrageous. This is where I think you really need the legislature to dig in deep. And it's frustrating because we have to look at the ways that we can help, and so I'm really grateful that streamlining the process, making it easier, reducing the barriers to childcare, we can do that. But there's a lot of other really valuable initiatives that legislators could do in this space. And so I know you're doing everything you can. This council's been supportive to do whatever you possibly can, whatever we can as a city to reduce the barriers to get more providers. And more providers could also make it more affordable, so.
Definitely.
Great job, Grace. Okay, I'm gonna send it to Councilwoman Reese. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. McAdon. Certainly, I think that everybody on this council understands that childcare is not a luxury anymore, right? It's the infrastructure that allows families to work. It enables local businesses to thrive and also helps to shape the development of our younger residents, right? But across the country, of course, and in this city, parents are having to choose some impossible, you know, sort of Occam's razor-type things because wait lists stretch on for months, tuition costs can rival rent. I know for my sister-in-law, who has two small children, it is as much as their mortgage for one child. So the shortage of childcare slots leaves working families in a position where they are scrambling for alternatives. And so I think this is a thoughtful approach to it. I have some ideas about maybe other things we can do, but I also think we have to reframe the concept as not being just about a problem for parents, because it's an economic development problem, it's a workforce problem, and also a community problem. So when families can't have, find the childcare that they need, they reduce their hours, they turn down promotions, they leave the workforce entirely, right? And I think all of us know people who've had to do that. I think employers then lose experienced staff, and children miss out on early learning environments because they're not able to get into those opportunities, and that really does not bode well for their lifelong success. So I think our city, and Madam Mayor, I think said it well, the city doesn't have all the tools it could. I think there are tools that we can leverage, and this is an example. I want to thank Tara Webster, who is one of the people who brought this issue to my attention during the last election cycle, because it was really one of the components of her campaign, and she was really pushing for us to do what we could. And I think that that is an important thing, that when people come to us with concepts, that we are responding to them with the changes to the things we are doing, because not all the good ideas we come from come from this body, right? In fact, most of the good ideas come from other people who are thinking critically about things in our community. I think there are also things that we have to look at about the fact that we are a childcare provider at the City of Reno. We have the Sierra Kids Program, so before and after-school programming, which operates, I think, in 18 or 19 elementary school sites. But perhaps there's a way to expand that. We do a lot of the vacation outreach program, so that's kind of a related concept on the back of your code change issue. But also, I think there was a comment by the Ward 4 Representative, Ms. Ebert, earlier about decommission schools. So Councilmember Martinez and I, for several years now, have been working on what happens when schools are decommissioned in the neighborhoods where we are, and try to determine whether the City of Reno will participate in those decommissionings in some way. And of course, those school sites still have useful life, right? They have buildings that are designed for children, you know, little sinks and little toilets and all that sort of thing. So I think there's something there, there, that we could be looking at, where maybe a community center is the focus of a decommissioned school site, but it has things like senior services, or CHA is going to participate in parts of it to provide medical, or even for childcare opportunities in there. So those are things that Councilmember Martinez and I have been really working on, on the committees that we stand on with the school district. So for my part, I'm certainly supportive of the changes you've identified, and Madam Mayor, I'm over just slightly, but let me say, you've posited that there were three recommendations that kind of percolated out, but those were added costs. So I'm not really in favor of the ones that add cost. I'm trying to figure out how we can jump-start the opportunity for these to take root and see if that will create any movement in reducing these wait lists and backlogs. So what you've provided, I think, is good. I think we've got to do better, right? And see where we can. So once we get through this, maybe it doesn't become so much of a code-driven concept, which is where you are, but maybe it jumps over to the policy side, and we've got to make some choices. Madam Mayor is right, we don't have, like, the financial resources to do a lot of childcare or subsidies, but maybe in the Sierra Kids space, we would be able to make some positive movement.
Definitely.
All right. I'm gonna go to the left for me, Councilwoman Dur, and then I'm gonna head down to Councilwoman Anderson.
Sure. Well, I wanted to thank you for your work on this, and it very much clearly is an economic issue, a key economic issue from the Chamber of Commerce, Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce. For five years at least, we've heard from their director, Ann Silver, this is her top priority. Why? Because it is essentially directly related to people being able to be successful at work, and also to start up a new business, is they've got to get this address. So I'm so pleased that we are doing what we can. One thought I did have that you didn't mention, you mentioned that people were concerned about the fee, they weren't sure if they would get approval. You've put in some standards that would help them know they would get approval if they do these things. But I'm also wondering, you know, at, one of the things that we did in building was we held the fee to the end when they were getting a C of O, and I wondered if we'd looked at that.
So this, I'm glad you brought that up. This ordinance, or this draft ordinance, would actually remove the fee.
Oh, you didn't mention.
Because they won't be, they won't be going through those processes anymore.
Right, because they, we've removed the need for an MUP.
Correct.
Okay. But the one that does require childcare center, CUP, still does.
And it will just be reduced to that 4,363 instead of the 4,900. And that's only in residential zones. So, and we can, we can always go further, and if this council says, let's just remove the CUP, we can do that as well.
No, no, I'm not suggesting that. I think it is reasonable to have the standard and to have a review, eyes on it. But I also think that perhaps that's, it's, perhaps we could take that one little step and charge it at the end instead of the beginning. So if you never make it through the process, you don't get charged the fee at all. But if you do, and you're gonna get a C of O to operate your childcare facility, then we'll give it to you once you pay your fee, you know? It's just another thought. I don't know, is this the place to do it, or would it be in our fee schedule, maybe?
I can look at how that would work.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right. Go ahead, Councilwoman Ebert.
Thank you.
So I had a question about part of, like, the process of vetting out where these locations should be allowed. So is there any kind of review process that, like, looks for, like, checks a sex offender registry around the area or anything like that? Is that part of the process?
Yep. So the state does handle most of that regulatory process, I guess. And they typically approach the state before, that's usually their first step, when they wanted to open, when they would like to open up a daycare. And so the state handles the things like the ratios. I think that they do handle, you know, looking for, at the sex offender list, however, I'm not sure exactly how that would work.
Okay, because it's at the state level.
Correct.
Got it. Okay. The other thing was, is there any kind of, like, literal tour that happens? Like, they're working with staff, but does staff go to the location and just do a walkthrough at any point?
Yes. So it depends on the type of facility, but typically through the business license process, there's inspections. With any building permit, we inspect it just to make sure, obviously, that the improvements were done correctly and safely. And so they are inspected, depending on the scale of it, with our team.
Okay. And so would Reno Fire also do inspections to make sure fire extinguishers aren't expired, things like that?
It depends on the scale. So for in-home childcare, sometimes the state fire marshal, state fire marshal does the inspection. And then for larger facilities, our fire department will do those inspections.
Okay. Okay, great. So, yeah, I mean, I just want to reiterate the need for childcare facilities. Great to hear that Miguel, or Councilmember Martinez, and Councilmember Reese are trying to work on that. I definitely have met with representatives from the Washoe County School District and taken tours of the Sted Elementary School in the hopes that we can use that facility. So if y'all can include me in those conversations, I'd really appreciate it, since that's something that's so, you know, desperately needed in Ward 4. So thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Anderson.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead. This is a topic you know well, too.
Oh, yeah. Your, your comparison to tuition, just, it's still eating me alive on the inside, because it's true. I think childcare for my two young boys is actually more expensive than tuition for my in-state son. So it's pretty scary. Really, I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done on this and helping us understand where we can move the needle or not. I'm curious about why the cost for an in-home childcare is the same as a childcare center in general. It seems to me like that is a huge barrier to entry for the mom and pops, if you will.
Sure. And this was just the planning process that was costing them an additional amount of money. So they're still having to go through their business license process, they're still having to go through the state licensing process. So this was just a small portion of that fee, and it was the same because ultimately the permit's the same. So both, so a minor conditional use permit's the same cost, no matter what you're doing. So we see minor conditional use permits for things like bars or outdoor event venues sometimes, and it's always the same cost, no matter what the scale is. And so that was some, one of the disparities we found, was they probably shouldn't be going through the same process if you're watching seven kids at home versus 100 kids at, you know, a childcare center.
So I'm sorry, did I miss that we changed?
Yes. So those fees will go away.
All together.
The only one that will stay is the childcare center will go through a slightly less rigorous process, and that fee will be reduced.
Okay. I'm sorry that I, I know you already described that, but I missed part of that.
I didn't clarify it, so.
Okay. That's all I, that's all I had. Thanks.
Thanks so much. Thank you for the presentation and the information. I know you touched already on the costs and relieving some of those for the facilities. Just curious, on time, how the impacts are with the ordinance that you're introducing? How, what effects would that have on the timeliness of them being able to open operations?
It would reduce, since it's removing this process, it would allow them to open up sooner. I can't quantify, I mean, 30 days sooner if they're not having to go through a 30-day process. But they're still having to go through their building permit process, business license process, and the process at the state. Our hope is that maybe other agencies follow suit, like the Health Department or the state, and maybe reduce or lower their regulations or their fees. But it's a small drop in the bucket. It'll probably reduce their timeframe a month or two.
And I think, just given the fact that there are so many constraints to providing childcare, and the need obviously has been set by all the different council members and you as well, whether you've experienced it or somebody in your family has, I know that it's definitely a need, and I know families who have had one of, you know, the spouses take time off of work to be able to accommodate doing this. And sometimes it's more financially beneficial for the household to do that than for both parents to work. And so having to make those decisions is tough, and so I appreciate your work on making sure that we are able to facilitate childcare facilities coming online and hopefully increasing the affordability of them. And then I also just wanted to highlight the fact that you took into consideration the residences around the area and the safety of the children and drop-off with the lighting and the height requirements for the fencing as well. So thank you so much for your consideration on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had one more question, but we can finish.
Okay. So, thank you. Today is really a testament to local government getting it right. I think I'm very excited, and it makes my heart warm for the business that we are, we were in. I was having coffee, this started, I was having coffee with a constituent. We were talking about childcare. Asked the team, what barriers do we have here? Worked with the mayor to get it on the agenda, and in that process, we were able to provide some productability. We removed barriers, and we added some consistency, and we were able to do it in a really timely manner from July of 2025. So I just couldn't be happier with the way we all worked together with the colleagues supporting this, and you and your team bringing us to the finish line. I'm, I'm just so proud of the City of Reno right now and the things that we can do to make a difference in this space, and we did it. So thank you very much. It's just, it's, it's really a very happy day for me. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilwoman Keller, you cannot see your light on when it's turned. Just lift it up a little bit. Lift it up. There you go. Perfect. Okay, go ahead.
Just one extra question. In your work that you've been doing to research these opportunities we have to bring the barriers down, did you find that there were any regionalization opportunities we have for childcare where we could improve policies by working together with our, you know, with, whether it's a state or the county? I know the county is heavily involved in overseeing these facilities from a health perspective. So did you, did anything rise to the top?
Most of the regulations got shifted from the county to the state level a couple years ago, and so the county, just from the Health Department perspective, is involved. We've talked to the county to try to see if there's anything that they could do or even just understand their process better so that we can better inform the providers that reach out to us. They're working also with the Children's Cabinet to maybe streamline or just make their process a little bit easier to understand. But, I mean, most of the regulation comes from the state level. And so as far as regionalization, I don't know that I see a huge opportunity there just because it's pretty limited from jurisdiction to jurisdiction what we could do.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any further questions? Nope, okay, I'm going to send it to you, Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to refer.
All right.
Sorry, before we do that, we need the attorney to read the bill.
Sorry, Carl, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance introduction, Bill Number 7324 for Possible Action, Case Number TXT 26-00001, Childcare. Ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code Title 18, Annexation Land Development, specifically in Chapter 1803 Use Regulations, Section 1803 206, entitled Table of Allowed Uses, Section 1803 303, entitled Public Institutional and Civic Uses, Section 1803 405, entitled Standards for Specific Accessory Uses, to add use standards as they relate to childcare centers, childcare in-home, childcare workplace, together with matters which pertain to or are necessarily connected there. Move to refer.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Great job, everyone, thank you so much, Grace. Okay, we have to go into Attorney Klein, I think, or? Okay, we are going to take a quick 30-minute break and then we will be back. So it's 12:30 now, so come back at 1 o'clock.
Hi, I'm Reno Fire Chief Dave Cocker. It's an honor to connect with you as we look back on 2024. A year of innovation, strong work, and unwavering dedication to protecting our community. The Reno Fire Department reached incredible milestones, overcame challenges, and made a real impact on the biggest little city. Let's look back at 2024 and the achievements and highlights of the Reno Fire Department.
2024's wildland season tested our region with incidents like the Gold Ranch Davis and Callahan fires, straining resources from across the West. Although these fires happened just outside Reno City limits, our firefighters stepped up to assist while ensuring our Reno community remained well protected. In 2024, RFD deployed 264 resources to more than 100 wildland fires, contributing over 65,000 hours of work. These efforts brought nearly $2 million in reimbursements back to the department. Right here at home, we responded to 51,737 calls for service, an increase of over 2,000 from the previous year. Our commitment to service continues to grow along with our community.
The Safety and Training Division saw impressive growth in 2024, paving the way for a stronger, more skilled team. We proudly promoted 11 captains and eight operators, hired 25 new firefighters, and welcomed five single-role EMS personnel. This year, we ran two three-week fire equipment operator engine academies, one two-week fire equipment operator truck academy, and a two-week acting captains academy. These intensive programs help sharpen our skills and prepare our teams for any situation. We also expanded our monthly company-level training sessions, introducing specialized active shooter training and wide-area search exercises. And through partnerships with surrounding fire departments, we enhanced our response capabilities for wildland fires and hazmat operations. Additionally, we upgraded the training facilities at Station 11 with new technology to improve the delivery of our programs, ensuring our team is always ready to meet the demands of our city.
The Reno Fire Prevention Bureau experienced significant strides this year in 2024, starting with the appointment of a new fire marshal, three fire captains, and three new fire inspectors. Our team saw great success in our arson investigations, achieving an impressive 80% conviction rate and completed over 6,000 building inspections to help keep Reno safe. For the fourth consecutive year, we hosted our dumpster program thanks to a grant from State Farm. This program helps neighborhoods in the wildland urban interface clear dry vegetation and debris, creating defensible space. Thank you to everyone who participated and helped reduce wildfire risk in our community. In 2024, we were also thrilled to receive nearly 245,000 from FEMA's Fire Prevention and Safety Grant to develop a community wildfire protection plan. This comprehensive framework will prioritize wildfire mitigation efforts, improve emergency preparedness, and ensure long-term safety for Reno's residents and infrastructure. Keep an eye out in the coming months for ways to get involved. We're excited to collaborate with you.
In 2024, we work closely with our community partners to update the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. The plan assesses the potential impact of all prioritized hazards to the region and provides mitigation strategies and actions to reduce such risks. The update ensures the plan remains effective in addressing the evolving needs of our community. We also prioritized firefighter health with initiatives like our Fourth Annual Cancer Screenings and the introduction of the coronary calcium scan. These proactive prevention programs are vital in detecting early markers of heart disease and cancer, critical steps for firefighters facing heightened risks associated with their profession. Additionally, we launched a groundbreaking pilot program with the Epic Brain Center, exploring enhanced mind-body performance treatments. This innovative approach supports firefighters dealing with PTSD and other mental health challenges while empowering them with improved executive function to perform at their best.
2024 was a landmark year for the Reno Fire Department Emergency Medical Services Division with 30,649 calls for service. Collaboration played a key role in 2024 as we joined forces with regional partners to strengthen our unified response to medical emergencies.
We were excited to welcome our new EMS Management Assistant and expand our specialized training for our single-role program, ensuring our EMS team is always prepared to meet our community's high demand for advanced emergency medical services. We conducted division-level training on new medical equipment, including cutting-edge video laryngoscope blades that are vital in life-saving situations and new medications that can be used to treat various patient presentations by our mid- and advanced-level providers. We also implemented a new medical charting platform, further enhancing patient care.
Reno Fire Department's Support Services Division achieved significant milestones in 2024. Enhanced vehicle maintenance and repair, increased apparatus safety, and equipment modernization. Through our apparatus replacement program, we added two new brush trucks designed for firefighting in rugged terrain and a state-of-the-art ambulance, ensuring our fleet meets the diverse needs of our community. We also enhanced operations by refining the use of fleet cameras throughout our vehicles. These systems capture critical moments during incidents, training, and daily operations, providing insights that improve safety and support crew education. Our logistics team continues to push innovation forward, adopting advanced battery-powered tools on our fire engines and ladder trucks and improved personal protective equipment. These enhancements extend equipment lifespan, improve functionality, and prioritize firefighter safety. Looking ahead, we're excited to introduce a new heavy rescue apparatus in 2025, the first of its kind for our department since 1986. As an all-risk fire department supporting many different types of incidents, this addition ensures our crews are ready to respond to any emergency, no matter the challenge.
As we reflect on 2024, Reno Fire Department has much to celebrate. From our inter-local agreement with the Reno Tahoe Airport Authority, enabling us to assume firefighting services across all airport properties, and our partnership with Truckee Meadows Fire and Rescue, which now provides automatic aid to ensure the closest resource responds to emergencies, no matter the jurisdiction, we're building the foundation for continued growth and excellence. I'm pleased to share that we also received the keys to 455 East Second Street, our future central fire station. We're excited to begin serving you from this state-of-the-art facility in 2027. At RFD, we believe that being part of the community is just as important as responding to emergencies. Whether it's hosting fire safety programs, participating in local events, or building relationships with residents, we strive to be more than the first responders. We're your neighbors, partners, and advocates for a safer region. None of our work would be possible without the dedication of our team and wavering support of our Reno City Council, state, and federal representatives. Their commitment ensures RFD is always ready to serve and protect our community. On behalf of the Reno Fire Department, thank you for your trust and support. Together, we accomplished so much in 2024, and we look forward to an even brighter and safer year ahead. Thank you for standing with us.
My name is Robert Downs. I'm a field specialist with Rise. And this experience with Bonnie Pace and the Pathway Pilot has been awesome and tremendous, and I'll never forget it.
As we move into the next budget year, we're excited to share some of the key accomplishments this past year in the biggest little city.
Whether working to ensure a safe and welcoming community, planning for responsible growth, or maintaining strong fiscal accountability to our residents, our team is dedicated to building a community that people are proud to call home.
Running a city is no small feat. It takes seven dedicated council members and over 1,700 committed employees to make this city thrive. While you see some of them every day, many are behind the scenes.
But we all have one thing in common. We make Reno more than just livable. We make it lovable!
Ensuring the infrastructure in our community stands the test of time is critical to obtaining a vibrant and resilient city.
The utility services team oversees stormwater, wastewater, and recycled water throughout the city, including the sanitary sewer system. I know sewer is one of those things that people don't often talk about, but sewer systems play a crucial role in protecting public health and our environment. One important element in the sanitary sewer system is lift stations, which are needed in low-line areas to pump sewage up to a gravity sewer line. All of our sewer lines convey sewage and ultimately end up at our wastewater treatment facilities. Over the last five years, our team evaluated 27 public lift stations in our community and determined that some needed major rehabilitation. Since the evaluation, the city has successfully rehabilitated five lift stations and completed the design improvements for their seven remaining stations in need of rehabilitation. These remaining lift stations will be constructed in the next two years to ensure the sustainability of the systems for years to come.
Since 1995, City Reno Council has made street maintenance and rehabilitation a major priority. The Public Works Team maintains a pavement management system to evaluate the condition and serviceable life of over 755 miles of streets. This system allows us to plan for preventative maintenance and major rehabilitation projects based on priority.
Maintaining infrastructure, such as roads, is the job of the maintenance and operations team. This last year, the Streets Division maintained 755 miles of paved roads. That includes 37,000 miles of road being plowed, over 6,000 potholes repaired, and over 12 million square feet of cracks sealed or filled. Our teams work round the clock when needed to ensure that residents can get where they need to go safely, rain, snow, or shine.
At the city of Reno, in our Sewer and Storm Drain Division, there's 50 of us that take care of just over 800 miles of sanitary sewer. That includes 35 lift stations.
Our Sewer and Storm Drain Division in the city of Reno ensures safe maintenance for over 600 miles of stormwater lines. It's our aggressive preventative maintenance program that ensures that your system will respond properly to prevent overflows and flooding, keeping our residents and our environment safe and sound.
The Fleet Management Team maintains over 850 pieces of equipment, including police cars and other emergency response equipment. This year, the Fleet Management Team was ranked in the top 100 Best Fleets in the Americas. And doing work in-house saves the city millions of dollars each and every year.
And our final areas of responsibility is facility maintenance, who perform a wide variety of repairs and remodels and preventative maintenance on over 200 city-owned buildings. And just this last year, we completed a seismic retrofit of City Hall, which ensures the safety of both staff and the public during earthquakes.
Parks, recreation, and open space are vital for creating healthy, sustainable, and vibrant communities. Last November, the Reno City Council adopted the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Master Plan. The plan identifies top priorities and an implementation strategy to improve existing parks, trails, and recreational facilities, identifying and acquiring land for new parks and recreational spaces, activating the Truckee River Corridor and downtown spaces, and expanding recreational programming.
But the crowning achievement this year for the Parks Team is the Moana Springs Community Aquatics and Fitness Center. Opening in August, this 52,000-square-foot facility will include a 50-meter indoor competition pool, multi-use indoor recreation pool, an outdoor soaking pool, 5,000-square-foot fitness facility, and more. This project represents a vital investment in the health and well-being of our community for generations to come.
As we approach the completion of two major projects in our community, the Public Safety Center and the Moana Springs Aquatic Center, it's important to highlight the clean energy components of both projects. At Moana Springs, the city received a community project funding award to install solar and was selected by NV Energy to be a community-based solar resource host site at the same location. The Moana Springs parking lot features solar-covered parking to support this project. And the Public Safety Center will include rooftop solar as well as battery storage to provide energy savings. By investing in clean energy, we are moving towards a cleaner, more resilient, and equitable energy future for our community.
Reno is one of the best places to live, work, and play, so we know that growth in our community is inevitable. At the city, we are focused on responsible growth to achieve balanced and long-term development that benefits all residents. Last year, the city of Reno completed the ward redistricting process that transitioned our community from five to six wards. Redistricting ensures that each elected official represents approximately the same number of residents. Final maps for the new wards were voted on by the Reno City Council following a community engagement process that spanned across four months and included 17 opportunities for residents to participate. The new ward maps will go into effect following the 2024 election cycle. We encourage you to visit our online mapping tool to learn more about the new wards.
Responsible growth means long-term planning. In January of 2021, the city adopted a new zoning code. And in June of 2022, the city initiated an amendment to address outstanding cleanup items. This includes everything from grammatical errors to accounting for updates in state law. Development Services has spent the past year working through these changes and seeking public input. Final adoption of an updated zoning code is anticipated early next year.
The city of Reno is working with our regional partners to manage water resources sustainably for future generations through the One Water Nevada Initiative. This program is working to ensure there is enough water available to meet the needs of all users while protecting and even improving the region's water quality and environmental integrity. A key element of this project is the Advanced Purified Water Facility at American Flats. With construction expected to begin in the near future, this facility will apply state-of-the-art water purification processes and provide the region with the potential for over 2 million gallons of high-quality drinking water daily.
At the City of Reno, we are focused on ensuring that everyone has access to safe and affordable housing.
The City of Reno helps to improve housing stability by providing rental and deposit assistance for all residents, including seniors and veterans. In the past six months, the team has assisted 584 households with rent, supported 175 cost-burdened seniors, and dispersed $1.5 million in rental assistance.
The City of Reno is a leader on the affordable housing front. Back in 2019, the state law changed. And since then, the city has been allowed to enact an ordinance that has given us the right to waive or reduce fees for sewer connection fees and building permit fees as long as the project is associated with an affordable housing development. And to date, Reno has approved reductions and waivers totaling almost $8 million. This has contributed to 1,800 new affordable housing units that are moving forward. City Council has also added conditional requirements for certain development projects, and those are to help pay for affordable housing. This has been triggered on five development projects. This is estimated to generate over $4 million in funds which will support affordable housing.
Last year, the City of Reno supported the development of 492 affordable units through funding programs and city incentives, including federal home funds, volume cap allocation, and sewer fee reductions. Developments that were supported include the Marva Way Apartments, Copper Mesa Apartments, Orovata Street Senior Apartments, and the Ridge at Sun Valley.
And while increasing the number of affordable housing units is a priority, the team is also working to invest in low-to-moderate-income neighborhoods. In the past year, the city funded $1 million in park and pedestrian safety renovations and supported key projects, including park improvements at Robinhood, Dick Taylor, Paradise, and Mayor's Parks.
Downtown Reno is evolving as our community transitioned from a region focused on tourism to a more economically diverse city that supports urban living, transportation, social gathering, and small businesses.
Many consider Virginia Street to be the heart of our downtown, and the Virginia Street placemaking study reinforced that. Gil Design Firm, over three phases of community engagement, developed the strategy and a long-term plan of what our Virginia Street and our downtown could look like. City Council approved the placemaking study last fall and identified $2.5 million in state and local fiscal recovery funds to implement Phase 1 of the study. This year, state and local fiscal recovery funds were also utilized to create the Restore Reno Facade and Tenant Improvement Program. The program provided matching funds to property owners and tenants for facade improvements and interior upgrades. 39 businesses were awarded matching grants, with the total economic improvement value of the combined projects being $5.7 million.
At the same time, the team partnered with the Regional Transportation Commission to develop the Downtown Micro Mobility Plan, enhancing downtown roadway networks to improve safety for all users and create a more welcoming environment for pedestrians, bicyclists, and other micro modes of transportation. Design is currently underway for this project, and construction is anticipated in 2026. And no discussion of the downtown area is complete without addressing the Truckee River Corridor. This year, City Council approved the use of state and local fiscal recovery funds to make improvements along the Truckee River Path, including activation efforts, enhanced safety with better lighting, paint refresh, path improvements, and more.
Reno is committed to building a community where all residents feel welcome, safe, and able to fully participate in their government.
Providing access to city programs and services is critical to building a strong community. From improving ramp access to City Hall to the addition of Ubi Duo 3 and Listen Everywhere devices, we are working to make government more accessible for everyone. Throughout the year, our team works with community partners to host celebrations that embrace, honor, and recognize the diverse cultures represented in the biggest little city. This includes the Black History Month Celebration in City Plaza and the Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Island Heritage Month Celebration at Wingfield Park. Building a welcoming community requires intentional efforts to embrace diversity, inclusivity, and create opportunities for all residents to thrive.
The safety, health, and well-being of all residents is our number-one priority as we work to build a community we are proud to call home.
The Reno Fire Department provides all risk service to citizens and visitors of the biggest little city. Last year, the team ran almost 50,000 calls, a record high for the department. This includes everything from emergency medical response and water rescue missions to all types of fires, including structure, brush, and vehicle, to name a few. The team continues to meet the needs of our growing community by increasing staffing and resources for the department, maintaining the strongest training program in the region, upgrading equipment through the Fire Apparatus Replacement Program, and investing in proactive fire prevention measures. We are excited to announce that plans are already underway for construction of a new central fire station that will be located in the heart of downtown. The 70,000-square-foot facility will house administrative and fire personnel with the ability to respond with up to five separate crews to serve the busiest part of our city. We look forward to its completion in 2027.
The Reno Police Department boasts 354 sworn staff members. To meet the growing needs of our community, we added 43 new and dedicated officers to the ranks, along with the hiring of seven lateral officers from other departments throughout the country. Last year, our patrol teams responded to over 72,000 calls for service. The traffic team responded to 2,971 accidents. Victim Services served over 2,300 victims. And the Investigation Section was assigned 3,762 cases. These cases covered offenses from property crimes to crimes against persons. In September, the department launched a new data-driven initiative to improve crime and blight in downtown. The Directed Engagement Enforcement and Deployment Strategy, affectionately known as DEEDs, has been in operation for just over six months. In that time, we have seen a 12% decrease in the citizen-initiated calls for service, a 55% decrease in vehicle-versus-pedestrian crashes, and a 29% decrease in commercial burglaries. We are excited to announce in August of this year we will celebrate the opening of our new Public Safety Center in downtown Reno.
The Public Safety Center will serve as the headquarters for the Reno Police Department. Located in the former Reno Gazette-Journal building, this facility will be able to provide a swift emergency response to our community. This state-of-the-art facility is double the size of the existing station and provides exciting new features such as expanded public parking, private interview areas, community engagement meeting space, and improved safety and security features to ensure the building will stand the test of time.
A fast emergency response would be impossible without the crucial work of our Reno dispatchers. Last year, our dispatch team answered over 500,000 calls, serving as the vital link between individuals in need of assistance and emergency service providers. And this last year, the cities of Reno and Sparks, along with Washoe County and Remza, came together to identify a unified computer-aided dispatch program that will deploy the nearest and most appropriate resources to an emergency. The technology will be launched in 2025, improving emergency response for the entire region.
Our staff is made up of talented and dedicated people who are passionate about the biggest little city. We've built a workplace filled with integrity, positivity, collaboration, and diversity. An organization that has been nominated as one of the best places to work in northern Nevada for three years running and was the first organization in northern Nevada to be recognized as one of the best places for working parents. Our employees have endless opportunities to make a positive impact in our community. The people and stories behind our programs are why we take pride in our jobs and why we love the city. When we proudly look at the community we've built, we know we are just getting started.
We've had a lot of great accomplishments this last year, but the work isn't done. As we begin the next fiscal year, be on the lookout for some major projects.
Soon, we'll be opening the new Public Safety Center and the Moana Springs Community Aquatics and Fitness Center. These landmark projects will serve generations of Renoites for years to come. We hope you'll join us for both celebrations.
And keep an eye on downtown as we continue to focus on revitalization using the input and feedback we receive from our community. You'll see improvements to the Riverwalk, activation of Virginia Street, and improvements for pedestrians and micro mobility users alike.
To keep up to date on everything that's happening at the city, check out our website at reno.gov and follow us on X, Facebook, or Instagram at City of Reno.
Until next year!
You know how, uh, speeders got categories?
Categories?
Different types, different cars. Want-to-be race car drivers with zero talent and all the insurance claims.
Go on.
Yeah, so you got the "I didn't realize I was going 95" type. Like, the car magically went 45 over just on its own.
Ah, officer, I thought I was going 45. No, buddy, you thought about going 45.
Well, then you got the "I'm late for work" guys. Like, going 25 over is gonna make up for the 30 minutes they spent laying in bed watching TikToks.
Ain't nothing like risking a reckless driving charge to get to a job that you already hate.
We can't forget the "I was just keeping up with traffic, folks."
Oh, the "if everybody jumped off the bridge" defense.
Just because everybody else is breaking the law doesn't mean that you get a free pass.
Nah, but it does mean we all get to sit on the side of the road together while we trade live stories and I write this ticket at lightning speed. There's one!
Yeah, we got a black Volkswagen headed your way, guys.
Got him!
In all seriousness, Reno, we need to slow down when driving on our roads.
Speed and impairment are the two biggest factors in fatality crashes.
That is why the Reno Police Department will be conducting proactive speeding enforcement on McCarran and around the city.
Slow down, Reno. Nevada? The... I'm not from Nevada, and pretty sure the speed limit signs all look the same everywhere.
Do you want to make a difference in your neighborhood? The City of Reno's six Neighborhood Advisory Boards are your chance to shape the future of your community. From parks and public safety to development projects, your voice matters. Joining a NAB is easy, and it's a great way to connect with neighbors and city leaders while making Reno an even better place to live. Applications are open now. Visit reno.gov/nab to learn more and apply. Get involved and help make Reno not just livable, but lovable.
I'm Cory. I'm the Housing Manager with the City of Reno, and we are here at our second Love Your Block project, pop-up nursery for Yori Avenue residents. We had residents of this neighborhood apply, and we've got about 75 plants and trees here to give out to the neighbors to beautify the neighborhood, get a little more green here. One day of planting and a lifetime of shade and beautiful greenery in the neighborhood.
The Yori Pop-Up Nursery is a project that my neighbor and I kind of came up with. People get to beautify their yards. Sometimes landscaping is intimidating due to the cost. This initiative, this project, helps kind of eliminate that obstacle for a lot of people. And so, it'll be nice to see more plants in more people's yards and just make more of a beautiful neighborhood. Secondarily, I'm a huge fan of pollinators and native plants. And so, getting more of those in the ground is just gonna help the environment overall.
It's super exciting. I love this project. I started the Be Friendly campaign, which was created to help people talk to their neighbors. So, a lot of times when you start a pollinator garden in your front yard, it doesn't look like a traditional yard. So, I created these signs to kind of help with communication. It's a great neighborhood gathering, and I'm super proud to be a part of it.
We're just so excited to be here in partnership with Reno Food Systems, Be Friendly Nevada, and the Nevada Division of Forestry, alongside all these neighbors to get in the neighborhood and get planting.
My name is Maria Hernandez Ponse. I am a graduate from the Community Court, and I'm here to share my success story.
About five months ago, you and I sat down for the first time and had a discussion. What do you need? What do you want?
Madam Mayor, are you ready to reconvene?
Yes, welcome back.
Okay, we'll reconvene. It's 1:06 at this time. Councilmember Ebert, Councilmember Taylor, and Vice Mayor Martinez are absent. And we're on Item F1, an ordinance adoption to be read by the city attorney.
Okay, thank you so much. Do you have any public comment on these items?
We do not have any public comment on Item F1.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna hand it over to the one and only Carl Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6729, case number LDC 26-00011, South Valley's Park Zoning Map Amendment. Ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 1802 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled "Zoning/Rezoning" a 69.2-acre site located on the east side of Wedge Parkway, 800 feet south of Arrow Creek Parkway and bound by Whites Creek Lane and Interstate 580 on the south and South Virginia Street on the southeast, South Valley's Regional Park, to parks, greenways, and open space. PGOS, together with matters which pertain to or are necessarily connected therewith, Ward 6.
Move to adopt.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, sending... Madam Clerk, any public comment on Item F2?
We do not have any public comment.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna send it right back to Carl Hall.
Ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6730, case number LDC 26-00013, Luella Garvey House Historic Resource Designation. Ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 1802 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled "Zoning/Rezoning" a .36-acre site from professional office to professional office with the historic landmark overlay zoning district. The subject property is located at 589 and 599 California Avenue and has a master plan land use designation of suburban mixed use, Ward 1.
All right.
Move to adopt.
I have a motion to adopt. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, Madam Clerk, Item F3. Any public comment on this item?
None registered.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm gonna send it right back to Carl.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6731, an ordinance to amend Title 6, Chapter 6.14 of the Reno Municipal Code titled "Truck Regulations: Adoption and Enforcement of Federal and State Regulations for Motor Carrier Safety and Other Matters Properly Relating There Too." Move to adopt.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we head into Boards, Commissions, and Committee Appointments. That's Item G. Madam Clerk, any public comment?
No public comment registered on Item G1.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, I'm gonna ask councilmembers... I don't know if there's any real staff report. Nope? Okay.
Madam Mayor, unless there's someone who has a desire to change to something specific, I'd just say that we would let our boards roll. I think that unless there's anything specific.
All right, and usually, the body brings it to my attention. I did not see anything, so I assume everyone wants to stay in or on those boards.
I'll just put one caution. I know that we're missing a couple council... three council members right at the moment. I'm totally fine with the way it is and wouldn't mind voting it, but if we hear from them, I think we either need to reopen it or consider what they're suggesting. I don't know if... I have zero idea if there's any.
Then I'm gonna ask for a motion. They knew we were coming back.
I'll make a motion.
We're not... And like I said, I just want everyone to know. Usually, everyone asks me because it's gotta go on the agenda. I have not heard anything from what I did here is that everyone wants to stay where they're at.
Well, that's gonna be my motion.
Okay, thank you. And then, I am gonna ask... I am gonna ask council to bring back... Brandy and I serve on the fire board. Miguel has expressed interest. That was not on today's agenda, but I'd love for staff to bring that on the next agenda so Miguel could... Vice Mayor Martinez could step in there. So, okay, that being said, I got a motion.
Second.
I've got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Okay, Madam Clerk, Item H...
G2.
G2?
Sorry.
Madam Mayor, I spoke with Councilmember Taylor about this item, and she was in favor of reappointing both of the members that applied for their appointment.
Second.
Okay, um, this is, Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, before she left, she mentioned that to me.
She left, okay. All right, so, um, then I have a motion, uh, from Vice Mayor?
Second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Dour. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Uh, what else do we have here, Madam Clerk?
We're on item H1, City Council comments.
Okay, City Council comments. Councilwoman Dour, I see your light on.
I know.
Okay, anyone else? Go ahead. Councilwoman Anderson.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank, um, you, Ms. Dour, for hopping on the South Peak issue over the weekend. You're much more adept at getting into the social media and, um, being proactive about that. So thank you for getting that started. Um, we had some, we, the mayor and I received a letter today from the community, so it's definitely escalating. Um, but I just wanted to thank you for still having an eye on the word, um, even on a holiday weekend.
Well, you bet, and, uh, it was my every intent. I figured soon as we got the immediate issue addressed, you could kinda take it, take it on. So thank you.
All right. She's blushing over here. Don't give her a compliment.
Yeah, don't give me a compliment.
She's gonna keep going with it. Okay. Um, uh, I think that that is it, correct?
All right, if we wanna open the redevelopment agency?
We sure do. Right now, Madam Clerk, I would like to open the redevelopment agency. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Dour?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Ebert? Absent this time, Reese?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Shivi?
Here.
You do have a quorum of the redevelopment agency board for Wednesday, December 3rd.
Okay, fantastic. All right, any public comment?
We do not have any registered.
Okay, sounds good. Approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
All right, item B1 on the redevelopment agency.
Okay, well, I believe we have a staff presentation on this. Mr. McCardle, come on up.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Board members, redevelopment agency board members, Brian McCardle, revitalization manager for the record. The item before you today, uh, staff has received a TIF application for participation in a redevelopment project that is located along the river. Uh, in redevelopment area two, uh, for 200 rental town home units. Just to orient yourself on, uh, where this project is, it is just north of the Truckee River, kinda tucks underneath the Wells Overpass Bridge. Uh, the main entrance is off of Sutro Street, next to Waste Management's facility. Um, so that's just an aerial image, uh, of where the property is at. Uh, the, the edge of the property ends, um, almost to the backside of the Reno Oasis Ballpark where there is a electrical substation that, uh, NV Energy runs. As well as some access for the, for the backside of the Reno Oasis Ballpark. To orient, uh, this is an assemblage of different parcels for this development project. I'll run through those. Uh, the area in yellow is a piece of property that the RDA currently owns, but entered into a purchase and sale agreement with the developer back in 2021, uh, to sell the properties. The property will close contingent on the assemblage of the, of the neighboring parcels. Uh, so the developer, um, Conrad Sick with Valeo, who is here, if you'd like to ask any questions, uh, has assembled the area in purple and does have the area in red under contract. Um, the last parcel is the Waste Management owned parcel at the end cap right on Sutro. Uh, that is not under contract yet, but conversations have been ongoing with Waste Management for two years. But hopefully that'll get settled later this month where they can, uh, enter into an agreement to, uh, purchase that property. And that is why the developer is going out for the financing now to start putting all this together, uh, in preparation of building on the site. Just to summarize the project, so the, the developer is Valeo. Uh, the entity is East Commercial Row LLC. Uh, the representative for Valeo is Conrad Sick, who is with us today. The project type there proposing 200 market rate, uh, for rent town home units, uh, and 424 units of parking spaces. I will say that these, these are about 31 bedroom units, 62 bedroom units, um, and some three bedroom units. But on average, this project comes in at about 87% AMI. So this project is attainable workforce housing, which should be music to, to everybody's ears. But over the project for, for someone, um, the median household income, this project is certainly attainable and affordable. Uh, if the financing goes through as proposed and the project stays on track, this project could be delivered in the fall of 2027. Uh, and there is a total estimated construction, not construction costs, development costs of $74 million for these 200 units. This project did go before the RAB, um, when it, we received the application. The RAB had a chance to ask the developer questions, uh, review the project, uh, discuss some of the assemblage of the properties. The direction from the RAB back in April was to proceed to the next step in due diligence to conduct the financial gap analysis and enter into negotiations on the property. Just to give you an idea of the site design, so this is the, uh, layout of the proposed 200, 200 town home units. The TIF request is specifically related to all the public improvements that would be on the site. So the first one is the entrance from Sutro. Um, they're proposing a landscape buffer so that the entrance is, is a little bit nicer coming off the street. Uh, one of the big improvements there is adding a sound wall and drainage on the north side of the property along Union Pacific. So the Reno, uh, the retrench project does come out of the ground right here and come up to grade. And so the trench wall ceases and then it goes into chain link fences, which has been a challenge. Uh, and so this development, um, part of the TIF agreement would be to go putting in drainage and installing a sound wall on the north property. Uh, also it will extend Commercial Row, um, to put the cul-de-sac in the turn radius underneath the Wells Overpass Bridge. There will be some screening done for the Tomwa facility. There is, I believe, a pump station, um, on this map. Some screening around the property as well as some screening, uh, next to the Waste Management, um, recycling facility. And the big thing is this project is proposing improvements to the Truckee River that conform with the Truckee River Vision Plan. I will add an image. So in the Truckee River Plan, we, one of the recommendations was to improve the north side of the river to add more, uh, pedestrian paths, access to the river. And so part of the public improvement supported with this TIF application and the TIF funds would be for the developer to improve the river frontage, uh, with setbacks, with river trails. Um, and there is conversations with the developer after this gets built, that we would work, uh, with our capital improvement plan to improve, uh, the existing path from behind the Reno Oasis to connect to this development site. But we would, we would tackle that later in our, in our capital improvement plan. So why TIF is needed on this project? After the redevelopment, or the Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board, the RAB, uh, approved this going to the gap analysis. Uh, we consulted with the organization called SB Friedman, which does financial gap analysis for, uh, redevelopment projects for all over the nation. They work with Kansas City, Michigan, Albuquerque, uh, St. Louis, Boise, and they do the analysis for us. And they determined that this project would not proceed but for support with the RDA. Uh, they verified that there is a $3.24 million financial gap needed to make this project financially feasible. Um, so they identify that, uh, they did identify that a gap exists and that this project does in fact need the requested $3.24 million. Um, the reason why that's important is that this project cannot get secure outside financing without the capital stack coming together and the redevelopment agency's participation. How do we determine, um, how much is actually needed? There are thresholds that most banks and some investors, uh, need to see when investing in a project. One of those is yield on cost. How much can they get for the cost to build a project? The other one is the leveraged internal rate of return, which is 15% is the benchmark. Even with all the assistance, the, all the tax increment created from this project, it would still not get close to that 15% hurdle. But it gets it very close, enough to make this project work. Um, another thing our consultant recommended that even at 90% to the, uh, to the developer, uh, this project still makes sense. It is marginal, um, has a marginal effect on the returns. So, uh, even at 90%, this project is still financially feasible. So what does it look like when we just see this property developed? Regardless of the TIF agreement, regardless of the redevelopment agency, what are the benefits to the city if this property gets developed? Currently, right now, this property is paying $53, $53,000 a year in annual property tax, right now as it sits. Um, over the next 10 years through 2035, this property will generate about $437,000 in property tax. Over the next 30 years, it generates $1.6 million in property tax. What does the city of Reno itself see in its general fund? Every year undeveloped, the city of Reno receives $14,000 a year from all these properties, uh, in annual property tax. If this site gets developed, everything 10x's. So this property gets developed, after developed, this property goes from generating $53,000 a year to $538,000 a year. Um, if you run that over the next, uh, 30 years, that's $16 million in, in revenue and, um, property tax that would not be seen but for this property, uh, being developed. And what does that mean for the city of Reno? So the city of Reno would continue to receive that $14,000 a year annually up until 2035, when the redevelopment agency ends. And every year after that, in perpetuity, uh, this city of Reno general fund will receive $140,000 a year. If this pro, site does not get developed, you will never see that $140,000 be created. What does this mean for the tax increment? Now we're talking redevelopment agency. So if this property gets developed through 2035, where the redevelopment agency area two sunsets, this property will generate $3.2 million in new tax increment. And that is received to the redevelopment agency. Now I want to explain something. Everyone pays the same property tax rate throughout Washoe County. It is $3.66, $3.66 per $100 of assessed value. So everyone pays that. How redevelopment agency captures that is $2.89 for every $100 of assessed value goes to the redevelopment agency. But for any legislative tax increase or voter approved tax increase, it gets special treatment. The RDA cannot capture those funds. They're exempt because they were passed after the redevelopment agency was created. So there's all these, so we call those carve-outs. And so 76 cents for every $100 goes to these carve-outs. Those goes to schools, school improvements, school debt, some county things. The city of Reno does receive some of this for fire facilities and roads. And there was a ballot initiative to, uh, to fund animal shelter operations. So after this property gets developed, redevelopment agency would see $3.2 million come as revenue. But these other entity and agencies would receive 1.1 mil, about 1.1 million dollars over the next 10 years. Again, funds they would not have but for this property getting redeveloped. Other benefits to the city. Um, this site is, ha, is a dumpster fire. There is actually a dumpster fire. Uh, this site is extremely challenging. It creates, it needs a ton of resources from agencies and the city. The average cost to do cleanups on this property runs about $56,000 a year. Now I'll remind you, this property currently only generates about $14,000 a year in property tax. Yet the city is spending about $56,000 a year just on cleanup. That's not calls for service, that's not, um, fire and police activity, that's not other social services. It's just the cost to clean it. Um, and thank you to Cynthia, uh, Asfarza and the Clean and Safe Team for, for dealing with these issues constantly. But every year, this site collects four football fields worth of trash. That's four football fields if you did the entire thing every year. And there is a cost to clean that up, so that's about $56,000 a year. If this site gets developed, that is a cost that the city will not incur going forward. Um, addition to that, the site will be improved. It'll no longer be blighted and it'll no longer have that, these types of activities that are happening on the site. So the best solution to clean up the site is to develop it. Other benefits to the city, to the public and to the redevelopment agency. Obviously, the number one thing is, uh, we receive 200 new units of, of affordable housing, which is fantastic. Uh, it does remove all the blight on the site and does solve those challenges that we're seeing currently. It does activate underutilized parcels. And long-term, the city, the county and all the agencies do see an increase to the tax base, uh, over the next 10 years or the next 30 years. In our Truckee River Vision Plan, it was identified that these river parcels are perfect for development. Uh, these are empty at the moment, so this would be a critical development in realizing the long-term vision of bringing our, our river to life. The redevelopment funds, uh, will go towards public improvements, so those are public improvements for the benefit of the public. So there will be city of Reno owned assets within the, within the right of way. If, uh, the 90% is accepted today, the remaining 10% of redevelopment increment received could go to other things in the capital improvement plan. Additional improvements to the river, additional improvements to the area, um, lighting, landscaping, things like that. And then the other benefits to the public is after 2035, 100% of the property tax created go to all the existing entities at the current distribution split. So the recommendation on this participation structure is, staff is recommending that the developer receive 90% of the annual increment created, uh, through the end of 2035. That would be about $2.9 million. The remaining 10% would be retained by the redevelopment agency to do other, uh, public improvements, placemaking improvements throughout the area. Uh, this reimbursement will only go towards public improvements. It'll only also, uh, receive the reimbursement after the project's completed. So no money is given upfront. Uh, this, the funds are received after the development project comes online. And two other points that we would like to include in the agreement is at the end of the construction costs, we have audit rights to review all the costs to make sure that what we, what we, uh, modeled versus what it actually took to build were in line. And if not, we can adjust. And last, if the project sells or refinances within the next 10 years, again, we would have audit rights to see if the project is, uh, generating the returns that were modeled. And if not, we can adjust again. So it gives two points where the redevelopment agency could, can look at the finances of the project and make adjustments as needed. And so that is the recommendation for staff, um, and the motion is in front of you.
All right.
And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah.
Okay, great job. I think very, very good presentation. I would love to hear from, I assume, I would love to hear from you so council can get acquainted with who, who you are, what you do, your expertise. I think it's always important to know who our partners are and, uh, your background and why, why you're a great candidate.
Okay, well, Honorable Mayor and distinguished council members, uh, my name is Conrad. I'm with the company, uh, Valeo, and we specialize in redevelopment, uh, housing and specifically infill. So we do that in a variety of different cities. We have been active up in the university area, developing some of your student housing.
Are you from here?
I am not from here.
Okay. Your company is not at, from Reno?
No, not, not from Reno, but we've been in Reno, uh, started, this is back about 12 years ago.
Okay.
You know, so one of the first, uh, mid-rise student housing projects, uh, for you and our, we, uh, we're a part of assembling the property and bringing that to, uh, full, full, uh, development and build-out.
We all know that area.
So if you're, you know, I started with, uh, consolidating property, uh, as example, the here, um, property, that's one that we put all those properties together. And, uh, you know, created the opportunity for that, that housing to, to occur in that location. So we specialize in that type of housing. The things that attracted us here in Reno was again, a city that I believe, and I'm, I'm firm with, that has a, a vision, a great vision. I love the vision of the downtown from a standpoint of, you know, now creating, uh, a vibrant, living and breathing 24/7 community. And that's obviously taking, uh, a lot of leadership from your standpoint, but also the opportunity for other properties along that river to be redeveloped. We have the west side, the east side of the river, you know, within walking distance of downtown with industrial uses on them. So many of the cities that we've worked with, uh, as well have kind of gone through, you know, that, um, vision of, of really taking property that is what I believe is underutilized and in a, you know, blighted condition and bringing it to vitality through the housing. So the opportunity for downtown community with residents living downtown, ability to walk to the ballpark, ability to go ahead and access the varying entertainment and all the different things that the downtown offers truly, I think, is going to be unique. Now, the other aspect is we have a unique opportunity here where the majority of the residential parcs. Where the majority of the residential parcels downtown, they're small, okay? But they're small because they're, you know, constrained, and you have a variety of things that constrain that. We have an opportunity for more of a horizontal community, eight and a half acres within walking distance to downtown. So what that enables us to do is develop a lower-cost type of housing program. So the townhome, but also it suits more of a family. So rather than building just studios and ones, and you have twos, we're really bringing a larger mix of three-bedroom type things. So the ability to address the street with, you know, a parkway, street trees, pedestrian, ground-level entries, garages, and so forth, and really facilitating that market to an affordable townhome that a family can live and operate. We anticipate we'll be mapping that as a, with the potential of a for-sale exit, you know, on that. The market is just, to absorb that many for-sale is difficult, rent, but we anticipate that as an opportunity as well. Investors in this are more long-term. The opportunity for the opportunity zone, the tax increment, and they have been patient. It's one of these that we thought the land assemblies was going to be a little more, I mean, a little easier. The economy hasn't helped us, and, you know, again, the things that we're working with, waste management, you know, on to secure like a small parcel, you know, and again, trying to develop as strong of an entrance off of Sutro and create the opportunity for waste management to kind of create a more beautiful entrance. But in any case, that's our expertise. That's the project. And again, Brian's done a great job, and I appreciate you being here, and we're going to bring this one home.
Okay. Thank you so much. I want to give just this council, over the years, just so you guys know, many of you are new, this property has come to us many times in different forms, not for development, but we always said this area would be prime time. There was a lot of excitement for one day this area to be developed, and because it's actually a great piece of property, but it has challenges. Where it's located, and then, you know, the waste management piece, and so it really takes someone kind of that really can see the vision, but a lot of, I think, someone that's willing to put in a lot of work. But it's, it could be phenomenal. I dug in. I think these are incredible projects and what you've brought forward, so I want to be really supportive. I do want to clarify, I did jump on the redevelopment advisory board. Brian knows it, and there were some concerns, and I don't think this is, I don't, I don't want you to take this towards your project, but there were some concerns, so not just related to you, that the advisory board is not seeing the TIF projects in their entirety. And it wasn't presented yesterday, except for if it was, Brian, maybe you can help me there. I can't remember. And you had said, oh, there wasn't time. So I just want to ask that moving forward, that the advisory board does get to see the full analysis and picture, because I think they can be really helpful in helping us. And then they're also sort of independent. Everyone on there has a very extensive background in some capacity of an expertise, from attorneys to art experts to redevelopment experts. You literally have Taylor Adams on that board, people that really, I think it would be very beneficial. I was under the impression that that's what we were, that that's what that board would do. There's some frustration that they would like to see more transparency in the process. I think it would be very beneficial, not just on TIF levels, but on, you know, checkbooks and events and things like that. And again, talking a little bit about updating the RDA from 2005 to what is 2026, what does it look like? So that's kind of where we're at. But Brian did a great job. I will say, I think you do a really, really good job. It's a space you know, and so I just want to say thank you. But maybe we were not clear on what the redevelopment advisory board should do versus what we should do. So there was a little frustration, but I do want to say, you know, I think there was actually a lot of support for your project. So, good job. Like I said, this could be a really great start to, we want to see the river revitalized, and this would be a fantastic way to get there. So, all right, Councilwoman Taylor.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, Mr. Sick, let me say, let me be the first one to say, thank you for investing in Reno. This is so fantastic. I mean, this is exactly the type of project that we want to see, and we want to see the redevelopment agency bring to us. We've got housing, which we're in a housing crisis. We've got attainable housing. We have blight removal. We have infill. We have river improvements. We have everything that we've asked for. You can sit down. I just wanted to welcome you and say thank you for investing.
Well, no, he's been welcomed before in the other projects that he's done.
I haven't seen him before, so welcome anyway.
No, he's not new. I'm just trying to say he's very skilled.
I'm just saying welcome. Anyways, we've got property tax, we've got, like I said, redevelopment, the blight, and we're just, I'm very excited about this project. Brian, I wanted to ask you a really quick question. One of the things that I heard on the advisory board, the RAB board, was the concern about the financial analysis of it, and does that board have any, I guess, financial oversight?
So thank you for the question. So again, Brian McCardle, Revitalization Manager. So the redevelopment advisor board exists to provide input and advisement on projects and programs of the redevelopment agency.
And this project did go to it, and they were successful. I'm just concerned because we had this big catalyst project with Grand Sierra Resort. And during that time, they kind of said, okay, give it to council for the financial decision once the analysis was made. And then we have this project that Mr. Sick went through all the processes, right? He followed everything that we asked him to do. Awesome. And the advisory board said, okay, kick it to council. So have we followed all the steps that were in place?
Yes. So let me back up to the Grand Sierra Resort deal. So we did bring the final TIF analysis back to that board. They declined to give any opinion on what the financial structure would be.
So when we brought it back, they said, we're not really a financial board. We don't have the oversight. Take it to council.
You'll see in the meeting minutes, they said, we do not want to create a situation where it's us against city council deciding how much this development should get. So they declined to make any opinion whatsoever. They said, this looks good to us. Our only recommendation is that it does proceed for the redevelopment agency board, but they declined to opine or give a recommendation on the finances, period.
Okay. So this is my board, and I'm just super excited for this project, and we did, we did follow everything, all of the steps that we have laid out for TIF.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, go ahead, Councilwoman. What? Okay, we'll stay on this site, and then we'll go over here. Go ahead, Councilwoman Anderson.
Yes, sorry, Brian, I'm going to bring you back up just really quick. This project, when I went out with the hand team, this was the number-one site that we visited, and I just, to be able to see this vision within the landscape that I walked and we talked, you know, the people that have been kind of spending their time there, it's been, this is going to be fantastic. So that's very exciting. I just wanted you to talk to me a little bit more about the difference between the 90 and the 100 and the viability, and just help us understand why 90 and 100 are both options and why you're recommending 90.
So, under the analysis, the financial consultant said, due to there's so few years left in redevelopment area two, to make this project financially feasible, it's going to need every dollar created. So that. They said, however, if you were to do 90% rather than 100, the margin is negligible, and so the project would still make financial sense at 90%.
Understood.
So they said, at a minimum, 90% is what it would take, and so that's staff recommendation is to do the 90%.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
It's a function of so few years left in RDA. That is the challenge.
All right, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of things, Mr. McCardle. First, as to the process issues, I want to just make sure that I am clear that I understand that redevelopment agency board is a new thing for us, right? And so I want to make sure that now that this is the second project that's come down the pike, that we understand the process that will be going forward. You've indicated that the redevelopment agency board sort of declined to see the financial piece of this. I don't know much about that, but I guess I'm ultimately asking, what are we asking them to do when each project comes? Because for my part, I want to make sure that people who are giving of their time, have been placed on a board specifically for their skill set, are given the opportunity to opine. So it sounds like they did opine that they liked the idea. The concept was great. They said, go off and go to the consultants. But what else are we asking of them?
So, thank you for the questions. Great question. So the redevelopment agency advisory board, as I said, exists to provide input on projects and programs. They cannot grant themselves additional power that you do not give them. And so if this body would like to get their opinion on future TIF deals before it gets presented, and in terms of how much they should receive over how long of a time, you can ask them.
I'm not sure that's the issue that I want them to address. What I want is to make sure that people with the skill and experience, especially on the development side, have vetted the project and have seen the financials that result in a positive approval, right? It will be for this body to decide what the split will be or how long it would be for, or all that sort of thing. So for my part, that's what I'd like to see, is just to make sure that they have the opportunity to vet and weigh the importance of the project.
Yeah. I didn't answer your first question. Correct. So when a project gets submitted to staff, we have a scoring sheet that essentially ranks it to see if it's even eligible. If it is eligible, we bring it before the advisory board to say, this is the project, this is the information we have, and it kind of outlines the pro forma, all the models there, the financials are there. And at that time, the advisory board can say, does this project achieve the goals and objectives of the redevelopment agency? Is this a project that we want to see? Is this project, did the developer provide enough information that we can make a decision to say, this should move on? Like, this is a good project. This should move on. And the direction from the RAB was, they recommended that this project, one, proceed to further few diligence, that we move forward and get the BUT4 analysis, gap analysis done, and to proceed with any and all negotiations to actually bring it before you here today. So that was the recommendation the advisory board.
And how long from the moment the project walked in the door in City Hall to today have we been?
It came in April, so it's been a few months. However, working with the developer, we, when we engaged the financial consultant, the financial consultant calls the developer and says, we need your final numbers. These numbers cannot change. We need your final numbers. So there was some time when we said, hey, the developer asked, give us, give us an extra month or two to get you final, final numbers. So there was a delay there. But probably two months from when the developer gets the information they need to where we have the financial analysis is about two months.
And I guess, because my time is out, I'll just say, I want to make sure that what we are doing is moving with all due speed, right? Not so fast that we make poor decisions, but we want to make sure that we are a partner with the development community who desires to see their projects come to pass. Time is money in the development community, and so is opportunity, right? And so for my part, I want to make sure that we're both doing the process that we've outlined, but also that we aren't the barrier to anyone's success. I have other questions in round two.
Okay.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and also some statements, and if you can come back up, Brian. So when we set up the RAB board, my understanding was that they were actually going to make a recommendation to us. And when I looked at the staff report, I didn't see that recommendation, and that started my gears running of, well, what is their role? So I took time to look back over their bylaws and their mission, and the bylaws, although we improved them, were very vague about what their job is, you know? It really didn't lay it out. And so I'm not criticizing you, but I am saying what I would like to see. I would like to see them have the two bites at the apple. Much like our staff, when they get a permit application, first they have to screen it for sufficiency and say, is all the material here in order to make a good decision? So that's step one before they get into the details. Well, that's what you're saying, that even the consultant said, we need more information, we need your final numbers before we can do our job. And then when they do their job, I, my expectation is it would go back to the RAB board for their review of the project, just like we'd think of the planning commission would review a project before it comes to us. So I would like to see that. I don't know about my colleagues, but that's the expectation. I'm not saying you did anything wrong, but I would like us, in these early stages, to strengthen this process a bit. So I've got their sign-off or the recommendation, and if there's a portion, like, well, we don't know if the split should be 90-10, or 85-15, or what it should be, we're not going to opine on that, but the parts, you know, but we like the project, or whatever. I think we would benefit from that, of having those eyes. And especially, we're talking about $3 million, and I don't think, I think it's appropriate, you know, since there isn't advisory board for them to, you know, look at something like this. It's not too small. It's not $100 million like GSR, you know, in that realm, but it is $3 million, and I expect we'll see a lot more projects of this size. The other thing that I was a little bit confused about was, it says in here that the city was to pay all infrastructure costs. I was very confused about what that means. And let me ask my last question, and you can answer both. I'm very familiar with this section of river, and if you could put on the map again, this is right where the Wells Street overpasses the river and the railroad. That's right on the left. And I spent a lot of time both walking this site way before this project, but also evaluating it when I was at the flood project. And we were supposed to, at the flood project, part of our map is to take out the road that is under the bridge and to replace it with a walking bridge that goes over the river. Because the idea was, there was very little connectivity in this section for people walking on either side, so they needed a something. But the road itself was providing an obstacle, creating more potential flooding. So what, my question here is, and I brought it up at my briefing, Ashley said it was a good question, which is, have we coordinated with the flood project and what their plans are for this overpass, underpass? I don't want to send the wrong impression to the developer saying, hey, it looks great to us, when both Miguel and I know that there are plans for this part of the river with the flood. So going back to the RAB, I think that would have been a good thing to also discuss with them, or the site constraints, the other agency concerns, that kind of thing. Like, it might be a great project, which, let me add, I really like the project. It is, it is that middle ground. It's right at the median. You know, you said you're at 90, 95%, 98% of AMI. I love that. I would just like that interagency look for the Wells overpass. I would like to understand better for your next project. I want to make sure we have, the advisory board has a real job. They're really digging their teeth in. So those are, do you want to address either one of those issues?
I would just again say, happy to get your direction on how you would like the advisory board. They're at your disposal, and you can grant them the ability to do whatever you, if you want their input, you can ask for their input.
Okay.
So happy to get direction on that. We did connect with TRINA, but also with the Truck River Flood Management Authority. They said that they would like to see this pedestrian, or this underpass bridge come down, but it was not a high priority at the moment, and that they were not interested in the idea of a pedestrian bridge.
Anymore.
Anymore.
Okay.
So that's as much information as we have.
Well, I think we should pursue it a little and make sure that the flood board agrees with that, because there is, just one more month. This is Sutro, and if you guys remember, we're building our police station to the left, to the east, and there was a lot of discussion about over, you know, pedestrian and bike access on Sutro, being able to safely go there, and this is just down the street from there. So perhaps one or the other, and we talked about how to get from the bridge down to the ground level to continue on, which it sounds like you want to do. So anyway, so just some markers. Okay.
Mr. Vice Mayor, could I just add something that dovetails on Ms. Duer's point?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. McCardle, I want to just make sure Ms. Duer has raised the issue that the flood project would have some opinion about things happening on the river. I think the other agency that has an opinion is RTC, and so my other question was going to be about that. RTC has recently characterized the river path as a multimodal corridor and therefore eligible for federal funds to improve as a connectivity corridor, much like it would a road rather than a trail. And my understanding, when we were in that process, and this is something that you've got to think about with flood, with whoever, the tribe, all these entities, is who is going to be responsible for the standards and designs? Because my understanding, and Madam Mayor can correct me on this, is that when we sat at the RTC and we characterized it as a transportation corridor, that was also the signal that they would have a design standard for the entirety of the path from county, or from the border out to the edge of county. And so I just wouldn't want for anyone to make improvements to the river path that were not coordinated with those efforts. Does that make sense?
Exactly. Exactly.
So to answer that question, thank you. The conversations with RTC are happening. Phase one of the Truck River Improv- Phase one of the Trekkie River improvements on the path are at 60% design right now, from the backside of the auto museum all the way to Broadhead Park. And so RTC has already done a conditions report on that section. We're in discussions to see what additional funds, with redevelopment funds, can be commingled to make this an RTC project. Phase two and three, it was mentioned in the vision plan to address the north side of the river and to start looking at improvements. Separate from that, in the CIP plan, one of the ideas is to do a trail design standards with a buffer of anything 200 feet north or south of the river needs to conform to these design standards. Not only for the river trail, but for private development as well, so that wherever you go along the river, it has a consistent design. So those designs have to be addressed and then adopted, but that is something we could take on next year.
And all I'm saying is, please don't saddle the developer with putting something in that we later want to rip out, or change, or do with. So it sounds like you're doing that, it sounds like you're talking to the right people. It would be Ms. Kosky, RTC, the flood project, the tribal entities, all that. Thank you so much for the indulgence.
I'll have round.
Yeah, I have a question. So this plan here, it looks great, I like all the trees. Is this a specific plan for what the development is, or is this just kind of like a artist's rendering of what could possibly happen here?
This is just a amassing of the project, and then what we receive is a pro forma based on what they would like to build.
Okay.
Before it goes into construction design.
Okay, so this is not necessarily what would go here? Okay.
It is what you would use to start conversations with general contractors to start.
Okay. And there was mention of vertical development. What is the height limit for development in this area?
That I cannot answer. I believe it might be 55 feet.
Okay, how many stories is that? Do you know?
It's sort of the MUUN.
Yeah.
So with the cap, I think there's a high cap.
Brian, we need him to come up to the podium if he's going to speak, please.
Quick reference, I would say, within the MUUN, it would be 85 feet, eight stories.
Eight stories.
This project will be two and three stories.
Okay, so not looking to go to the maximum?
The constraint here is basically the single access. The single access limits us to 200 units.
Okay.
Unless that bridge across the river could be used for emergency access, then we can go and fulfill the entire MUUN.
Is that something that you're trying to get, is access on that bridge?
Well, we tried that very originally, so that was a three-year, that's, that was a discussion we've had three years, and kind of ongoing.
Okay.
Relative, and the connectivity, obviously, for the other connection points between our project and the ballpark, and so forth. Those have been coordinated, you know, obviously with Brian and the, the river master plan. Flood has looked at it. You know, so we've, we've proposed several solutions and so forth.
So that's ongoing.
But right, right now, the constraint is, you know, the emergency access.
Okay, so if some things worked out, this could potentially be taller?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, and this is probably for Lance regarding, or maybe Ashley regarding the TIF. The, the piece that would go to them is, you said, or Lance said it was after the project is completed, they would get the funds? The 90% or the 10%?
Correct. So the recommendation from staff, based off of what we've heard from this board, is that we engage with pay-as-you-go options. So the idea is the developer will build their project, they will be assessed, they will pay their taxes, and then they will be reimbursed from that.
Okay.
So we're not fronting anything upfront. It reduces the risk to the redevelopment agency, and that's based off the direction from this body.
Okay, so it's like ongoing, it's not like at project completion, then you get the funds?
Correct.
Okay.
It's as you go. It's every, they pay their taxes twice a year, so based off of that reimbursement would come in.
Okay, okay. I'll probably give more, but thank you.
So you know, that is very standard in cities, it's the best model. It's really good. So, yeah, it's very good. Do any of you guys have any more questions over here? Nothing? Okay. Go ahead, Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to ask Mr. McCardle first. I heard words being used somewhat interchangeably. I heard affordable housing, workforce housing, so I'm not sure those are the same thing. And then also, I was not sure I understood, Mr. Sick, maybe you would have the answer to this, is it a for-sale project or a rental project that can later be sold? Someone tell me what we're building.
So the first part, Brian McCardle for the record, that is the, the common challenge with discussing affordable housing. Is it big A affordable housing or little a affordable housing? So big A affordable housing is when it's subsidized affordable housing.
Will this be that?
Or no.
Okay.
This is naturally occurring affordable housing, meaning no subsidies, nothing like that, just naturally occurring.
So I would refer to that as attainable housing, right? That someone could attain, but nonetheless, that's fine. Workforce housing is something different, yes, or?
No, actually, attainable housing and workforce housing are both in that 80% to 120% AMI range.
And then is it designed to be a rental project or a for-sale project?
This is designed to be a rental project. I, I can invite Conrad in to discuss any future plans to do anything else with it.
Well, I think, Mr. Sick, I'd like you to answer that question, because it sounded like it was a mix of both. And it's not to put you on the spot, I just want to know what it is.
Rental housing, so it'll be built for rent.
And so it will not have individual APN numbers that could be later sold?
And we're working on that right now, from the standpoint of being able to do a tentative map.
Understand.
For the potential conversion before.
Yeah, it would seem to me that that's the ultimate plan. Look, I spent a bit of time on Vallejo's website, and so it looked like this was most similar to your project, the retreat at the University of Arizona, meaning a lot of assemblage of parcels, some unique challenges.
Yes.
Looks like an incredible project. The track record, based on what I've been able to review, including your green mission statement, incredibly impressive. I'm so grateful for your willingness to invest in Reno. Thank you for that. You also mentioned a word that I wanted to ask about, which, as you said, it was in an opportunity zone. So is that accurate? It's both in an RDA and an ozone?
That's correct.
And you're using both of the tools of the RDA through us and the ozone as some federal tax-related deferral?
None of the ozone. The ozone provides an opportunity from a different investment pool. You know, so as example, in a project, we have equity and debt, that provides an opportunity to use an opportunity zone.
Could be a lender, yeah, financing.
That specifically is oriented for a 10-year hold.
Okay.
So in that, that investor is not looking, you know, because as the longer I hold it, the internal rate of return goes down and so forth, the economics aren't as beneficial, but from the tax benefit, it does. So those types of investors, I have the opportunity to open that up to them.
Yeah, it makes sense to layer whatever you have to to get the project done. Okay, I appreciate that. Let me ask one last question, which is almost out of time, but I snuck it in there. The length of the redevelopment agency, this is for Mr. McCardle. It sounded like one of the constraints and the urgency to act and get this project going was the length of the redevelopment agency. That worries me. What worries me is this, is that we have an agency whose life ends, and we know that, and that that is determining the type of projects that would come in the door, and the type of investment that's being made. From my standpoint, that to me says that the artificial nature of the termination, which is by law, a termination date, is something we really have to rethink as a body. Because from my perspective, if the redevelopment agency sunsets before it's ever really had the opportunity to get going, and it really, that's what's happened, is it's been a series of economic issues, pandemics, recessions, near recessions, that have delayed the ability of this to be an economic engine for our region. And I think that we are sort of cutting off our nose despite our face, that the short termination window is really going to hamper the kind of projects that we see, which will either make for smaller projects, less projects, or no projects. And I'm not sure that's what we want. So Madam Mayor, I think from my part, I think that that counsels me, that we've got to really examine that in, in our legislative priorities.
Okay. Councilman Duer. Yeah, so I'm glad to hear this is more of a conceptual plan. The, the things that worried me about it, didn't look like there was a lot of room for that river path, okay? Like, the, the project is building right up to the edge with a road, trees. I really didn't see a path, and I don't see what happens when we hit the Tamwah building, that's a Tamwah, I think, the white?
That is Waste Management's recycling facility.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
And are we talking about moving that? No? Okay, well.
Tamwah does have a pump station, it's item number five up there.
Five. Oh, I see it. So, so anyway, what I want to make sure is that we think this through, how this path in this section would go under Sutro and under Wells, and like you said, tie across the river, what does that look like? Because we do need these inner ties across the river, we take out, there, there's no really bicycling over the Wells overpass, very scary, or walking. So what were you going to say, sir?
Well, so this section portrays the concept for the river edge.
So you're planning to terrace it?
Different from what the plan showed. The plan was more illustrative and so forth. This one was drawn rough in coordination with the river consultant. So in the plan today, where we had a road within this.
I got you.
We now have the path.
Okay.
So, and that was really kind of the impetus for the TIF, because prior to that, before TIF, I couldn't afford to go ahead and do this all on my own, to create a river path and grade this whole thing out and lose the area that we did for this. Now, I remember very early on, the mayor, what the council really was supporting this whole connectivity.
Exactly.
And we're here to support that.
So your concept, I mean, I'm sorry to cut you off, I only have a few seconds.
Okay.
So the concept is to have a terraced path, and terracing is generally good, and I wanted to say, the flood project also had a plan for right along where the baseball stadium is, and the baseball stadium kind of took over and did not coordinate with the flood project. Now, they ended up having to protect themselves from the 100-year flood, but the design of the flood project was 117-year flood, and I don't know how that all settled, but the point is, is they did not coordinate. The flood project was actually going to buy out the motel where the, that backed up to where the baseball stadium is. And so I'm just sharing with staff why it's extremely important, as, just as it is on the GSR side, that we have to work hand and glove with them to fully understand and not impact, you know, any agency's plan. That's why I want to make sure we are a little more proactive, get all that information in front of the RAB, the advisory board, before we're making these decisions. And then, thank you for your comment, but my last thing that you didn't address before was, I'm still really confused about when it said in the staff report about the city paying for all infrastructure. I, I didn't understand, is it from TIF? Is it separate from TIF? And, and I really think this is for Brian more than you, sir, I, I'm just saying. I, I was unclear what monies are being paid for what infrastructure.
To correct that, I think the TIF funds that we're proposing, giving to the developer for this, for this project, would have to go to all the infrastructure and public improvements.
I see.
That is, that is.
It's not to help them build a townhouse? It's to, is it to help build a road?
It is to help do the improvements along the road. Actually, it is, because commercial row right there would be extended. So it is to cover the cost of extending commercial row to where it is underneath the Wells overpass.
Okay, and I'm not sure what that means, but anyway, I know you had mentioned like a wall, and you mentioned like this path, and I, I just, I'm not clear what we're talking about. Could you try again?
So there's two options here. One, the TIF funds can go towards public improvements.
Do you mean the, the 3 million, or our?
3.24 million in TIF funds.
Or the 2.9?
2.9, correct, I'm sorry. 2.9 million, that is being proposed by staff to go to the developer. Would have to go to the items in front of you there, which are public improvements. That also means that our funds aren't going into the entire development capital stack. Our funds are being retained to support specifically the public improvements.
And money that we would get, which is only like 500,000 or less, like?
Uh, yeah.
300,000?
300,000 over the next nine years.
So are we restricted on where those funds go?
Nope, those funds will go into the redevelopment agency administrative budget to be used for operations and capital improvements.
All right, well, I'll just sign off with saying, I really like the project, but I really want to see this coordination with RTC, flood, and so on.
I'll just add that the decision here today is not a development decision, it's a financial decision.
Right, I understand. But this is my moment to say what's important to me. Right?
Yeah, and I'm so sorry, I believe I called you Lance earlier, I apologize for that.
He's just like Lance.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just blank.
You're a good guy.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I really, I'm kind of conflicted about this, because I know there's a lot of projects we want to do, we've done a lot of studies, and if we, you know, kind of give this money to this project, does this mean that we can't do some of the other things that we would like to do, like from our placemaking study, things like that? Like, what, what impact will this, you know, TIF arrangement have on other projects we could potentially do?
I think what is in front of you today, thank you for the question. In order to get the site developed, there needs to be a catalyst, because the normal financing, this project could never get built today.
Yeah.
So it needs a catalyst. And so what we're proposing is, we use the future property tax created by this development to help fund the development. How does this affect other redevelopment agency projects? If this redevelopment project never gets built, there's no funds to.
There's no funds available.
Utilize anyways.
Okay, okay. And then this is for the developer. Do you, do you only do projects with TIF, or like, is this a one-off for your type of development?
In fact, we had a great, sure, just for a moment, success, we were developing faculty-staff housing for Cal State Fullerton in the city of Brea.
Uh-huh.
Site no different than this, was owned by the Orange County Housing Authority, and also the railroad that ran along this track thing was a brown field site. And we utilized TIF through the city to enable us to develop the improvements necessary to mitigate the environmental condition of the site, as well as the railroad issues that we had and so forth. And we've developed 83 faculty and staff housing at an 80% moderate income level in Orange County.
Okay.
And delivered those on a ground lease, and the faculty and staff are there, aiding in their recruitment and retention of high-quality faculty for that university.
Okay, so that's another project using TIF, but is, is that something you do for all of your projects?
No, no, it's, it's.
It's just coincidence, it just happens to me that way.
Working with infill and redevelopment and so forth, it becomes a common element. So we've done a whole host of different types of financing. Our student housing project down in Knoxville, Tennessee, that, that had an actual, they call it something different, but in essence is TIF.
Yeah.
But it all went to the project.
Okay.
But as Brian indicated, it's one of those things that, you know, again, you're creating an economic engine for the future.
Yeah.
And that's what the tax revenue does. And in this project, I have, you know, the river improvements and all the different things, it's, it's, it overburdens the ability for us to deliver this project.
Yeah. Would there be, and this is real quick, if you're interested in me, maybe this is for Brian, would there be any kind of like bond required to say that, you know, this improvement on the river is going to, you know, going to be stable or be maintained for a period of time after the development is completed?
Uh, thank you for the question, so Brian McCardle again. There's no bonds related to this project. All the improvements listed here would be, on the list in the contract, the eligible improvements. If the developer does not deliver on those eligible improvements, then the funding that he would receive for those would, they would not receive.
Yeah, I mean, like, long-term, like, it gets completed, they get the, the funding, and then a year later, it's crumbling. Like, what, what happens then? Like, what, what happens then? Is there any kind of agreement in place to say, this is going to continue to be stable and maintained beyond the minimum requirement to get the TIF funding?
So there's no risk to the city or the redevelopment agency doing this project? There's no debt, there's no bonds, there's no risk whatsoever.
I understand that, yeah.
And if, if in year three, the property deteriorates, the assessor will assess the property for less, which means less money coming to the redevelopment agency, which less money goes back to the developer. So if the developer chooses, sorry for pointing. If the developer chooses to deliver a less-than-quality project, they're really hurting themselves because it's less income created.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the river part, you know, specifically. Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Lee, I think we have one more round over here on this side. Because I think they have exhausted theirs. And I want to make a motion and move on.
Mr. McCardle, I really, I have my last question because it's in my one minute. So the question was asked by one of the colleagues about the transfer station for waste management. I am someone who believes that the transfer station should be moved off the river, right? And so what would we have to do to make that happen? Like, what, is that something that the RDA can get involved in? Is that something that this developer is already thinking about? Like, I mean, it wasn't part of the presentation today, but it seems like it's a natural question to ask based on the council colleagues' questions.
Thank you for that question. We have had discussions with waste management, specifically on the site needed for this developer to try to engage to help it go along. I think waste management is aware that over a long enough timeline, the location on the river probably isn't the best site for them. I think the question becomes, where would they go if they moved away from the river?
Well, and that's always the question, of course, because I've been having that conversation with them now for four or five years. So, yeah, I think it's important. We don't really want, we want housing along the river, right? We want businesses, vibrancy, try hills and walking, beautiful things, not a transfer station. It's no slam on waste management. That was where it was located historically, that's fine. Let's find an opportunity to move them.
So the redevelopment agency does have the ability to facilitate that happening?
Oh, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I was ready for a motion.
Okay, I'm going to have you make that motion. Before we do that, hold on one second. Councilwoman Ebert, your light is on.
Yeah, I was just thinking a motion.
Okay, I'm going to actually hand it to you. But before I do that, love the project. This is a parcel that we've known has been challenging for a very, very long time. So I think this will sort of start a new vision for that entire area that definitely, definitely needs it. So that's, that's exciting. I did want to ask Councilwoman Taylor about when we created. So projects, great, process. Just want to ask Councilwoman Taylor, because it was kind of your brainchild for the advisory board, and what your vision is for that board, what you would like them to do, so that we're all clear. Because I don't want to be up here confused thinking that they are seeing TIF projects, if that's not the case. So I want to make sure we have the best direction for the advisory board. I was, like I said, I attended yesterday. And I think that there was some thoughts that they were going to see these projects. And so just tell me what your, your thoughts are so we can either give clear direction, or I would say this, maybe they're not needed. Maybe, you know, they might not be needed in that capacity. So, and I want to be respectful of their time and what we want to ask out of them. So that's all I'd say. I think we should get pretty clear of the direction we want to give them when we move forward.
So, Madam Mayor, just for clarification, do you want the motion and then we have the conversation?
Yeah, I think we can have that later. This is a separate.
Okay.
I was just wanting you to, you had a vision of what the advisory board.
Yeah, and we, I think you and I, I think I voted against the RAB board.
Yes, you, you did. So maybe that's my point.
So we should probably have a conversation.
Well, you, you, and I don't know what your reasoning was for it. We didn't need it? Did you vote against it because we didn't need it?
No, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm in line with what this item is. So do you want me to make the motion?
Well, I want you to give me some clarity.
I really wanted a very sophisticated. I mean, maybe they, they don't. I was envisioning a RAB board that would actually make more of the decision. Have more authority, actually, is what I was looking for.
Okay, all right. Well, then we should have a conversation then.
Let's do it.
Because you voted against it, and I wondered if that was because you felt that we didn't need it. And maybe I don't want to create more work for them.
Sure.
And so that, that was sort of the concern. All right. With that being said, so go ahead.
I move to accept the financial but-for analysis prepared by SB Friedman Development Advisors. Approve the requested tax-acument financing participation for the Zero East Commercial Row Project at the 90% reimbursement rate of $2.9 million and authorize the Redevelopment Agency Executive Director to execute an owner-participation agreement with Valeo consistent with the outlined terms.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. Do you want to? I hear you over there, you're chiming in. Go ahead, discussion.
Yeah, I have a question. So I do support this, but I do have questions. Like, will this project come back to council? Will there be like specific plans that we vote on? Like, is this the last time we're going to see this?
Thank you for the question. So after today, it will follow the process of every other development that goes through the city, from going through development services to getting the permits, zoning, et cetera. This is just supporting them on the financing side. And I will mention that with this motion, it does give us the two points of audit rights for the future in case we need those. But no, you will never see this financial portion come before you.
Yeah, not the financial portion. I'm just talking about the plan or the project itself. Will it go to Planning Commission? Will it go to a NAB for the areas? And will it, you know, go through that whole process and come to council with the design aspect of it, or no?
Can clearly articulate specifics, but it would follow the same process of every other development project in this zoning area.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so I think Councilmember Ebert, what Brian is trying to answer the question for you, but he's not a planning expert. So if this follows a CUP process, it will follow that process. If it is required to go to the Planning Commission, it will go to the Planning Commission. Whatever the criteria is, it will go through the normal process as if a TIF did not exist at all. Thank you.
Okay, because my concern is that, you know, we kind of agree to like a 200-ish unit, you know, development. And then there's another access point gets figured out, and then it's an eight-story building. So just want to make sure that, you know, that doesn't happen. So, okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ashley, for sitting here. She was over there, and I grabbed her and said, you need to come sit over here so we can grab you and ask you questions. So I appreciate it. Thank you, congratulations. Are you excited?
I am very excited.
Okay, good. All right, let us know how it's going.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, we are working, we're in the point of despair with waste management.
Yeah, good luck. That's great. Good. All right, Madam Clerk.
All right, Madam Mayor, we're on item C1, Redevelopment Agency Board comments.
Yes, okay, so here's my comment. And Councilwoman Taylor, where did she go? She just, is she here? Is she coming back? Obviously, she just left. However, I, I want to bring it up. I'm confused as to why we, I want to, I want to have a full visioning of the RDA board, what this council wants to see, what your vision is. Right now, it seems like we're putting pieces together, obviously updating the plan to 2026, 2026 from a 2005 could look very different. So I want an overall plan. I also want to have, I want to understand the direction of the advisory board. She said she voted against it because she wanted more oversight. But that's, so if that's the case, then I want it to be very clear. Because if, if that's not happening, then we don't need them. I don't want to waste people, I don't want to waste the, the time of those people that sit on that board. They're all really busy as well.
Mayor, would you let me to bring back an item on the RDA agenda, just for a discussion and feedback as we craft what the guardrails are and the expectations?
I was going to ask for that.
I thought it was more for like planning, too. Like, we make the decision, but they were there to help with like, is this, you, planning?
You have a real opportunity to get this right, to do something really incredible with this, with, with the tools that you have in the RDA and the money. But I also don't know if, like, the million dollars you guys just gave out for, what was it, Restore? I, I didn't know until I saw it publicly. Those are the things that I think we really just, if we have updates, then we can be informed. Maybe those things are things that are important to them, maybe they're not. Is housing a priority for the RDA? I don't know. Or is, are small businesses a priority for the RDA for you guys? I don't know. But I think it's a conversation we should all have here to know the direction in which we want to go. And so it should be a strategic, and I hate to do strategic plans, I don't even want to mention that name because they all sit on shelves, they cost money, they cost time. I don't know how to make them, don't call them that. But some way to find out, what are your priorities? What do you guys want to see? What is the vision for those RDA areas? I feel like we haven't really had that conversation about the ability in which we can use some pretty impressive tools to make some great changes, like incredible. We, we didn't get this opportunity until, you know, now. So I think we're all kind of trying to figure out, what does it look like? Let's do it. I'll put it on an RDA agenda. Yeah, and again, I don't want to have an advisory board if it's not something that we're going to utilize. Because there was frustration that they thought they were tasked with one thing. And so I think there was communication. That's why I was asking Councilwoman Taylor. It was her initiative to put an RDA advisory board in. I thought it was a great idea. She voted against it, but then, you know, I wanted to know today. So I'm just trying to say, I want to have some conversations that we can all be on the same page and get something done that can be transformative. And also, what is the structure? I sent a memo yesterday, you know, Jackie, I sent you a memo on public safety. Is that a priority for these RDA districts? I don't know. I honestly don't know. So I'd like to see something in some way that the council gets to, I guess, because you are the RDA board, gets to have a say in what does it look like moving forward, especially even with, part of this has also been activating events. There's a lot of events that are taking place that are coming out of RDA funds. What does that look like? Right, am I, am I right? Maybe, you know, so I'm just saying, like, I feel like the council doesn't know exactly what the role is of the RDA, why it's here, and why we utilize it. So if we could get something in place moving forward, so everyone, I'm just saying, I just feel like we're disconnected there.
I mean, wasn't that long ago that we made the bylaws? I mean, I thought their job was to kind of vet out things that didn't sound like a good fit for Reno. And they're kind of our team to help come up with a plan that doesn't cost money to do, you know, to create a plan. Like, that's kind of what their role is supposed to be. Like, that was my understanding of it, that they would kind of weed through the things that come through so we're not getting bombarded. And they would pass them on to us to make the financial decisions. But they could also do some degree of planning, you know, for us. I thought that was kind of, you know, that's, it's called an advisory board. Like, that's, what they're supposed to do is advise us on those things. So anyhow, thank you.
Well, and I have it here, the role of, and I think Brian put it up here, but it just says, provide an assessment of proposed projects. Provide its views on opportunities presented to the RDA. Review and comment on matters from time to time that are referred to the RAB. The RAB's authority is limited to providing non-binding recommendations. It has no decision-making or executive power. So it's very, I guess it's very, it's not very, it's very vague. Very vague. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, well, I've been on advisory boards, and I even chair some right now. And I happen to agree with you. This is one reason I wasn't really sure how I was going to vote today because I felt like the project had not been fully vetted by the advisory board. And lots of times, advisory boards are sort of, I'll just call it window dressing. Like, it gives an impression of like a formality of process, even if none exists, that they're there when you need them. And if you don't want to use them, you don't. And I don't really like that level of vagueness. I don't think it is satisfying to board members that serve that as an advisory board. Of course, they're not a decision-making board. But we, I thought when we set them up, reset them up, that their value was going to be bringing these different expertise that we don't necessarily have on council, and to vet projects at sort of a ground level and give us advice on what to do. Just like Planning Commission, we might have a different opinion. We, we might think differently than they do. I think that's right. We're elected, they're not. But I do think we really need like role definition, process definition. I don't want to be confused on the next project with one person, like, like Brian said earlier today, oh, all of the touchpoints and milestones were met, everything's perfect. And I was over here sitting thinking, I don't think everything's perfect. Where's their, where's the recommendation from the advisory board? You know? So I, I like the project. It had, again, to your point, Mayor, had nothing to do with this particular project. I just wasn't feeling comfortable with the process, especially when we set out the GSR process, and it was quite formal. It had a room packed of people. We went through months of financial analysis. The RAB board visited with it several, at several touchpoints. So that's my biggest concern. We're just getting started. So I'm not too worried that, you know, we've broken any direction or making any missteps. I think we're becoming more aware of what's involved and the advice we need and how to proceed. And, and so just clarity always helps.
Appreciate that. And I just, it's going to be very unpopular when I say this, but I do feel that it is window dressing. I think you actually stated that very well. It is window dressing whenever, and I also think it wastes staff time. And it's wasting the time of that board and what it was intended for. So I wanted to have that conversation open and transparently because it's becoming uncomfortable.
Yeah, and I don't want to argue with the council whether they did it right or did it wrong. I just want to know what.
But I think that's part of the problem is we need to know what all of this entails, what you want from us, what you want from these advisory boards. It's been very vague. There hasn't been any, anything strategically on the RDA in that capacity. And it would be great, too. I invited the advisory board, too, to come whenever we have. That's why I put it on the agenda moving forward, RDA being on the agenda. Even if we don't have any business, at least it's on there in case we want to talk about it. So, go ahead, Councilwoman Anderson.
I think that that was the perspective. I think that this board could use the most is hearing from, is it Paul Klein, is he the chair? We can sit around and talk about what their value needs to be, but they know what their value is.[1613.85] And if they were able to come to us and let us know what their highest value would be in their advisement, and then we can discuss it from there. They've only seen two projects. Maybe they want to see more about what the RDA is doing, maybe they don't. But it is the RAB, and hearing from them would be valuable. Moving forward.
So I did invite them to come to council meetings, so I think you'll get to hear from them, which will be great, too. So we know what they're thinking. I didn't know until I attended, so.
And if I could add one more point before you, Madam Manager, which is, it's really up to the council to provide the charge for an Advisory Board. I mean, we actually went over all of that when we reevaluated all of our boards. We have to charge the board, they're not supposed to tell us what they're doing. We're supposed to tell them what we need them to do.
We did, but we did. We did give them those guidelines. And now we're judging our own guidelines that we gave them. And so that's why I'm saying, if we think they're as valuable as we're saying they are, they should have a voice here. That's all.
100%, that's what I'm saying. I was looking for their voice in the staff report. That's exactly what I'm saying, is I was looking for their input.
Okay, Madam, we're going to move on. Madam Clerk.
Okay, so we're closing out Item C1, or on Item D1 for the Redevelopment Agency Board, which is closing public comment, we have none, so I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so we're back on the Reno City Council for adjournment, so.
We are, but before we do that, we have a special guest in the House, and that is Mr. Chris Gilio. It is always so wonderful to see you, he hates this, his face is getting very, very red. But someone that is a great friend to the city of Reno. Chris, how long have you worked for the city of Reno? It's like 20 years or something. How long?
1999.
I love it. That is impressive, but.
I started as a teen, youngster.
And I laugh, because I say, he's like the bank of DC, because he knows where all the grants are and helps us on the federal side, and gets us all the money allocation. He's very, very good at his job, he's very well-liked in DC. Ashley knows him very well, spent a lot of time with him, too, whenever we're back in DC. We haven't been back in a long time, but thank you so much for being here. I just wanted to acknowledge you, since you're back in the biggest little city. All right, okay.
All right, we're on Item J1 of the Reno City Council Agenda. So we do, we did receive two letters, one letter of support and one letter of concern after 4:00 PM yesterday. That has been distributed to the Reno City Council, so we're on Item K, a motion to adjourn.
Do we have, I have a motion?
Wait, did we have council comments on this meeting?
We already did them.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I missed, I did want to have, say, some comments if I can.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I just wanted to talk about the property use earlier. I think I came across a little bit harsh about the rental increase with Ms. Turney. I just want to clarify that that wasn't directed at you at all. I know you've done a great job of taking over a lot of things. We've had a lot of unforeseen circumstances here, and I know you've done a lot of hard work to get things cleaned up, so I want you to know, I'm not, that was in no way judgment towards you. It's just frustration. Yeah, yeah. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. And I apologize if I made you feel like you were in the hot seat. So that was all, thank you.
Second, all right.
Aye.
The motion passes, we're adjourned. Thank you.